Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, September 27th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council audience as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd like to welcome the audience watching on cable channel 22. Council mics are open. Can you please call the roll?
Oh, there we go.
Thank you. Mayor Ali, Councilmember Allen, Councilmember Seer, Councilmember Graham, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Kelly, Councilmember Euler, Councilmember Regenbach, Councilmember Rockregal, and Councilmember Valpula. We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Our first proclamation recognizes the 125th anniversary of Bradley University. And here with us, I think we have Dr. Stephen Standford, Bradley University's 12th President, if you would come forth, along with Dr. Warren Anderson, the Vice President for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Welcome, gentlemen. We're happy to have you here. Our proclamation reads, "Whereas in 1897, Lydia Moss Bradley founded Bradley Polytechnic Institute in honor of her husband Tobias and their six children, all of whom died before reaching adulthood. Her goal was to provide young people with an education that would provide them with the means of living independent, industrious, and useful lives. And whereas Bradley consistently ranks among the top schools in the Midwest in many major publications, including U.S. News and World Report, The Princeton Review, and The Wall Street Journal. In addition to these honors, Bradley's Fulbright Program was ranked sixth in the nation. And whereas Bradley University has offerings for students of all ages, including classes through the Turner School of Entrepreneurship and Innovation, the Charlie Steiner School of Sports Communication, and programs and tours through the Ollie Osher Lifelong Learning Institute. And whereas students, student athletes, and faculty and staff have a legacy of nationally-recognized achievements, Bradley's speech team holds over forty national championship titles. The Bradley sales team has the honor of being the first back-to-back national champions of the National Collegiate Sales Competition. Student athletes have seen success with men's basketball and their nine appearances in the NCAA tournaments, and the two-time appearance of Bradley's baseball in the College World Series. On campus, the Foster College of Business received the Innovation and Leadership of Business Education Award, and in 2009, the Bradley's International Trade Center was awarded the Presidential E Award for U.S. Exporters. And whereas Bradley University is renowned for driving generations of change for the last 125 years and the next 125 years, and we thank them for being longstanding community partner. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, and a proud Bradley graduate alumni, do hereby acknowledge the 125th anniversary of Bradley University."
I don't know how much more to add. That was such a wonderful proclamation. So, thank you. I just want to say I'm honored to be here on behalf of my colleagues to be part of this ceremony and accept this proclamation. It's a real honor for us in a variety of ways. And one of the things I've been very thoughtful about lately is we have the good fortune of carrying Lydia Moss Bradley's name on our university. It's not lost on me the impact she has had throughout the city. And one of the things that I'm so proud of is that we get to carry her legacy. One of the things you'll hear me talk a lot about this year is we are laying the foundation for the next 125 years. I will also say that Peoria is and always will be our home. This is our home. We're proud to be here. And one of my passions is to do everything we can do as a university to make this great city even better. So, that's something we're very committed to do. And on that note, I want to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Warren Anderson, who is now serving as our VP of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And one of the initiatives that is really important to us is to create a more welcoming and inclusive environment. So, on that note, I will turn things over to Dr. Anderson.
Good evening. As the President said, we really take our stewardship seriously in making sure that not only are we creating the most culturally competent campus in the United States, but really partnering with the Peoria city and region to make sure that we are the most culturally responsive city and region in the country. I'm a relative newcomer. I've been here about eight months now. So, this really just solidifies the decision that we made to move to Peoria, and we love it so far. So, we are looking forward to many more years of partnership with the City of Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you. Bradley is known all over the world. We appreciate that you're right here in Peoria. Thank you very much. Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation recognizes 22VA. If Michael Reagan is here? No, he's not here. He is the founder of 22VA, and I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Okay. Thank you. Whereas the origin of 22VA is twofold. September is Suicide Awareness Month, and 22 veterans commit suicide every day. The Veteran Administration has confirmed this and recognizes that this translates to one life loss every 65 minutes. And whereas 22VA was founded six years ago to provide veterans struggling with post-traumatic stress disorder and other challenges with an outlet for their experiences, 22VA helps those in need by raising awareness and connecting people with organizations that can help their by reducing the number of suicides. And whereas 22VA also seeks to make an impact by connecting those in the community in need of support with art and hetercultural therapy, both have shown to make positive outcomes in the lives of veterans. And whereas I encourage all community members to take advantage of the resources available from 22VA, now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize 22VA for their impact on our community and proclaim September 22, 2022, as 22VA Suicide Awareness Day in Peoria, Illinois.
We are at the minutes.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move to approve the minutes of the Joint City Council and Town Board meeting held on September 13th, 2022, as printed.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Can I get a screen? Thank you. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. 22-314 is a communication from the mayor and interim Corporation Council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency. 22-315 is a communication with a request to approve a sole source purchase of ShotSpotter Investigate and software setup yearly maintenance costs for three years from ShotSpotter, Inc. in the amount of $84,900. 22-316 is a communication with a request to approve the purchase of 20 Panasonic Tough Book FZ55 laptop computers, 20 extended warranties for Panasonic Tough Books, and 20 Havas Tough Book 55 docking stations and mounts with combination antenna-for-use and police squad cars from CDS Office Technologies in the amount of $91,440. 22-317 is a communication with a request to approve the low bid of Illinois Civil Contractors, Inc. in the amount of $59,154.25 for the McClure and North Traffic Signal Removal Project with an additional authorization of $5,915.75 for contingencies for a total contract award of $65,070. 22-318 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request for the following: A) to accept the low bid from Stark Excavating, Inc. in the amount of $1,265,139, and approve a contract for culvert replacement carrying the east branch of Dry Run Creek under Merrell Lane with an additional authorization of $126,861 for contingencies for a total award of $1,392,000. And B) adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2022 budget to allocate $881,000 from the Stormwater Utility Fund balance for the Merrell Lane culvert replacement project. 22-319 is a communication with a request to approve a change order for $120,000 extension of the storms sewer cleaning, televising, and evaluation contract with J.C. Dillon, Inc., and to authorize the City Manager to execute the change order for a total amount of $386,000. 22-320 is a communication with a request to approve and authorize the City Manager to execute an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation in the amount of $108,507 plus up to 125% of the estimated cost for contingencies for the city's participation in the Bob Michael Bridge rehabilitation. 22-321 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Peoria and the Greater Peoria Sanitary District to clean and televise the city's combined sewer overflow outfall lines for an amount not to exceed $272,202.50. 22-322 is a communication from the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, and City Clerk with a request for the following: A) to approve an agreement with Diligent Corporation to provide a council agenda and meeting software and boards and commission software, known as iCompass, in the amount of $19,935. And B) adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2022-2023 biennial budget relating to the use of general fund balance in the amount of $19,935. 22-323 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and Staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R2 single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 2305 East Grandview Avenue, Peoria, Illinois. And on your desk, there are two handouts. And then 22-324 is a communication with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and Staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R1 single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 3119 North Knoxville Avenue, and including for access-only, the property located at 3207 North Knoxville Avenue in a Class R1 single-family residential district and a Class R3 single-family residential district. 22-325 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2022-2023 biennial budget related to the use of general fund balance in an amount not to exceed $101,000 in 2022 for reimbursement received from Biohersia for fire services. 22-326 is a communication with a request to approve the site application to add a subclass 1A 2 AM closing hours to an existing Class K rental hall liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for Red Hat Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Don Ax Throwing, 1001 Southwest Washington, Suite 5-201, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. 22-327 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Urban Forestry Advisory Board with a request to concur of Brian Probst. 22-328 is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Housing Authority with a request to concur of Alma Brown. 22-329 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Civic Center Authority with a request to concur of Norris Chase. And 22-330 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Fair Employment Commission with a request to concur of Brittany Strickland. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there items to remove from consent? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number 22-319 and 320, please.
Those numbers, please.
I'm sorry?
Those numbers, please.
22-319.
Nineteen, okay.
And 22-320.
The second one again?
22-320.
320, okay. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 22-323.
Councilmember Graham?
22-324, to be removed, please.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Jensen? Are there items to remove from consent? Can I get a motion to approve the rest of the items? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Rockregal. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-319 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to approve a change order for a $120,000 extension of the storm sewer cleaning, televising, and evaluation contract with J.C. Dillon, Inc., and to authorize the City Manager to execute the change order for a total amount of $386,000.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Powers, can you, I had a discussion with you this afternoon. Can you give us a brief, a brief of our conversation this afternoon, please?
Sure. Can you hear me okay? Basically, this is laying out the completing of the mapping of our stormwater system of what we estimate to be around 143 miles to date. When it's completed, we believe it'll be around 190 miles total. The televising is going in conjunction with the survey and actual mapping of the system. Whereas our, actually, who is here, in fact, our program manager for stormwaters determined that about 60% or 27, excuse me, 27% of the entire system that we know exists has been completed, televised with this contract. 60% of what we found is in good condition, 20% is in fair, and 20% is in poor condition. We use another contract for operational maintenance of storm sewers to maintain the poor and fair areas. We don't have any major projects identified as a result of televising, yet we anticipate we will. Again, that's pretty much it. After it's done and it's completed and we condition rate the entire system, we'll probably do about, excuse me, 13 miles of pipe per year as a preventive measure, and that should put the entire system on about a 10- to 15-year cycle for inspection.
Thank you very much for this report. Madam Mayor, move to approve this item.
Seconded by Councilmember Rockregal. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-320 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to approve and authorize the City Manager to execute an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation in the amount of $108,507 plus up to 125% of the estimated cost for contingencies for the city's participation in the Bob Michael Bridge rehabilitation.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, just a quick question here. Sorry I didn't get a chance to call you today, but I'm interested in knowing a little bit more about IDOT's commitment in this project and our commitment. Where's the money and what's gonna happen, basically?
Maybe if I could ask Director Powers to take this one, too, and he can, he can share some information with you on this project.
Thank you. Sure. Mr. Counselor, basically, this is a $22.2 million project. It's a rehabilitation of the entire bridge. They're actually gonna widen the bridge and consolidate pedestrian and bicycle traffic to the north side of the bridge, whereas today there are two sidewalks, one on either side. They've committed to keeping pedestrian traffic open throughout the project because there is a lot of pedestrian traffic on that bridge between us and East Peoria. We are also in conjunction with that project, working partially on our Adams-Jeffson one-way, two-way conversion, and that intersection, we'll be trying to work and coordinate with doing that at the same time. There will also be a trail, or a path, if you will, coming off of the pedestrian or shared pedestrian bicycle trail coming off of the rehab bridge going into what will future be, be the future Riverfront Park that we have taken on partial maintenance for. We have accepted responsibility for snow removal on the pedestrian portion of the bridge, and East Peoria has accepted responsibility for trash removal on that part of the bridge. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. They are on schedule with the project.
Can you tell us where the money's at?
Oh, our contribution?
No. The $21 million from IDOT. Have we received that?
Actually, it's a state project. It's an IDOT project.
So, when's the starting time? And this money's been committed?
Bear with me. I think they're starting 20 through 23.
23?
2023.
Thank you very much, sir. Madam Mayor, move to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, could you explain? I'm not sure I understand what 125% of contingencies refers to. What, I looked around. What, what are the contingencies? Okay.
So, so our portion of the project is, is $108,000. That's for the, the walkway that comes off of the bridge. Maybe Director Powers can explain the 125% for you and what that means.
125% of the contingency basically means that we are responsible for that amount, or 100% of the contingency plus 25%. 125%. The contingency being put in place for inflation, change orders, those types of things that happen routinely throughout construction. In this day and age, primarily inflation.
Okay, just so I understand. Let's say that this is going to cost us $100,000. What is 125% of the contingency on $100,000?
$125,000.
Okay, so we're saying we could possibly be on the hook for $225,000. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Mayor?
Clarification. Councilmember Graham?
I believe that this is an extremely important development for our city, improving our infrastructure in one of our major bridges, in this case, the Bob Michael Bridge. And this bridge unites two great communities, one on the east side of the Illinois River and the other on the west side. And it just so happens to be the meeting point of two great districts, District 1 and 2, Warehouse District, Central Business District. Too bad Gary Sandberg's not here tonight because one of the things that he advocated for eternally was repairing our infrastructure, and that included something as simple as sidewalks and curbs and liberalizing allowances. So, the significance of tonight is not lost on me. Bob Michael Bridge is an important link for all of us. And not to take away from the importance of the moment, but, Director Powers, have you heard some of the discussion about the possibility of lighting this bridge up as we have already done for the Murray Baker Interstate 74 Bridge, just a little bit to the north?
Not quite to that extent. It's gonna be ornamental lighting on the bridge, but not like, no, not like Murray Baker, meaning where we can change light colors and so on. No, we had no discussion in that regard. But there will be ornamental lighting.
Good, good. Because I will tell you, I think that almost every Peorian I talk to and people who come to our city, coming to our city from the west, especially over that bridge, it's amazing how, how beautiful Peoria is and how appealing a bridge becomes when we have lighting on it. And so, I think that due consideration will come eventually to lighting of the Bob Michael Bridge once this rehabilitation project is done. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second on the floor. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-323 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and Staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R2 single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 2305 East Grandview Avenue. And on your desk, there are two handouts, one entitled "Guest Prior to STR" and one entitled "Roadway Conditions."
Sure. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pulled this because I had a request.
I pulled this because I had a request from a couple of the residents to speak to this item before we vote, so if we would offer privilege of the floor to Lori Judd and Gary Newhouse. Thank you, Lori.
Howdy, I'm Gary Newhouse. Lori and I live at thirty-seven oh five North Grandview Drive. I did send a letter to council members. I don't know whether some of you had a chance to read it or not, but I'll just reiterate, one of the things that I think makes us a bad choice for a place for Airbnb is the public safety issue. This home is located on a dead-end street in kind of a secluded neighborhood with no good access to any thoroughfare. To get out to a thoroughfare, you would have to go up Grandview Avenue to Harmon, then to Bishop, then to Harvard, which turns into Lake by the time it gets to Prospect. Now, Grandview Avenue, Harmon, and Bishop do not have sidewalks, but they have a lot of foot traffic and bicycle traffic. The Peoria Greenway Trail, some of you may think of it as the Rock Island Trail, crosses Bishop. And so in addition to all the people in the neighborhood, and it's a very pleasant neighborhood, I really have never enjoyed living in an area so, so much. Everybody walks all the time for exercise, for pleasure, walking dogs, riding bicycles, that kind of thing. But so there's a lot of traffic there, and the Rock Island Trail, or Greenway Trail, whatever you wanna call it, does draw a lot of people, and, you know, everybody that's gonna be coming to or going from this property is gonna cross the trail. Now, there are signs, diamond-shaped signs with the bicycle silhouette, alerting drivers to the fact the trail is there, but like this morning when I was walking with Gus, that's our dog, I noticed that one of the signs, the one for the traffic going westbound, is pretty much totally obscured by the trees that hang out in front of it. So somebody that wasn't familiar with it might not even notice that. You know, for the people who live there, you know, we know about it. We just automatically slow down. When there were railroad tracks across there, we slowed down automatically to look, even though we knew the train wasn't really probably coming. But anyway, somebody who is from out of town, looking at their navigation app, trying to find street signs, worried about whether they're gonna be late for the, I don't know, the rehearsal dinner or something, could just go right through that and never even realize that there was a, a trail coming across there, and if, you know, Mom and Pop and little Jenny learning to ride a bicycle were coming down the trail, and she's all excited and didn't even know about a stop sign, went right out there, and there's somebody, you know, in a hurry to get somewhere. I know that could happen anytime with anybody, but it's just much more likely to happen when people are coming through there and are not familiar with that. Also, just because it is dark during some of the months of the year, people still go out walking and jogging after they get home. Sometimes they're wearing headlamps or reflective clothing, but even that can be pretty disorienting, disconcerting if you're not used to it and you're thinking about something else. Part of Harmon has steel guardrails on either side of it, so if you needed to get to the shoulder quickly, you can't do it unless you're a lot more athletic than I am, and then when you do, you'll just be off in a ravine. So that's also a consideration. I could go on about the safety stuff, but I think that you get my point. It is, it is kind of a genuine consideration, not just an excuse of why we don't want something in there. It is, it is that. Also, though, there is just the thought that we would lose the quiet enjoyment of our property if we have a lot of track in and out and stuff on this narrow street. There's also, there's no parking on these streets, but there are almost always contractors, guard maintenance people and stuff parked on the street, which then it becomes a one-lane street, which makes it even more complicated and dangerous. But losing the quiet enjoyment is one thing, and the possible, everybody worries about the possible decline in the value of their property. Now, this particular property sold, I think it was November of last year, to, what the name of it was here, Venture Partners LLC for ninety-one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Does this thing mean I'm going on too long? Okay, I'll, I'll get, I just now noticed that. Anyway, it sold for ninety-one thousand dollars. Then in July of this year, it sold suddenly for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the current owners. I'm sure the only reason for that jump in value, or jump in sales price, is the fact that they anticipated it would go from residential to commercial. I don't think any of the rest of us are gonna see our property jump two hundred and fifty-five percent in its value by having a Airbnb nearby. And I won't berate anything else. I'd just say that this is a very pleasant neighborhood. The homes are not mansions by any means, they're just mainly modest homes of various vintages, but they all are pretty much owner-occupied and show a lot of pride of ownership. And I think this, anything that can be done to preserve this type of neighborhood in Peoria when it's, you know, Peoria keeps moving farther north and west because we've got a lot of cornfields there, we can fill up homes, but it would be so nice if we could just keep some of the neighborhoods that I sort of fell in love with when I came here in nineteen sixty. Thank you.
Councilman Reganbach, you had someone else?
Do you have someone else? Councilwoman Jensen?
I would like to address the council, and I was going to ask for privilege of the floor for them, and Councilman Reganbach said he was already planning to do that, which is why I had not...
Certain, certain individuals you wanna recognize?
Um, one of them is Scott Carnahan, and I believe there's a number of others as well.
Thank you.
Good evening. It just so happens I'm a graduate of Bradley University. Go BU. Go Fighting Squirrels. I'm a transplant from upstate New York. I came here and to go to Bradley in the late eighties and decided to stay. Raised a family here, four children, couple of grandkids now. Myself and a lot of our neighbors are asking the council to deny the application for this STR. I live directly across the street from this proposed location. There is overwhelming neighborhood support in opposition to this STR. I sent a email to the council and to the mayor yesterday, sharing a density map of the opposition, and I have a petition with seventy-eight signatures on it. Fifty-seven of sixty neighborhood properties' residents surveyed oppose, oppose this STR. That's ninety-five percent of the people living in this area. Gary had brought up the safety issue. There's several facets to the safety issue. As he mentioned, the neighborhood does have navigation issues unique to the area, including poor visibility, poor lighting, steep hills, blind intersections, blind driveways, road surface disrepair. One of the handouts that you have regarding this issue shows some of that road surface disrepair. That particular location is right outside of my front house, my, outside of my, my house. Forgive me, I'm a little nervous. I've never addressed the council before, so... As Gary also mentioned, there's a particularly high volume of pedestrian traffic, all kinds of bicyclists, joggers, et cetera. I'm not gonna go into that, but to add a, an STR with an additional up to ten transient drivers in one STR, and it's my understanding that if this gets approved, there could be three additional STRs in the neighborhood. That would be forty additional people in the area. A traffic to add to this quiet little neighborhood that has narrow streets and no shoulders and no sidewalks. We're concerned also about the safety of our children from the perspective of the inability to vet transient populations that are common with STRs. I have two grandchildren, as I mentioned, that live in Peoria and would love to visit our home. There are a lot of children on our home, on our street, visiting, grandchildren visiting, and children of families. Addressing the safety issue, I was at the zoning and planning commission hearing on September first, when the owner assured the commission and many neighbors who were present that he will take measures to guarantee the safety of our neighborhood. To that, I can only say that with all due respect to the hard-working men and women of our law enforcement community, whom I respect and admire, even with all the experience and tools at their disposal and all the laws on the books, crime persists. There are no words that the owner can say or actions he can take to assure our safety. Make no mistake that an owner unoccupied STR is a business, not a residence. And our aim is not to interfere with business owners' operations, but it is to maintain the fabric and safety of our neighborhood. Introducing businesses and transient populations into neighborhoods erode the fabric of our community, which ultimately have detrimental impact on property values and safety. I would also like to add that if it comes to pass, that if our collective voices, and there are many here who would like to speak tonight, I hope that the floor would be open to hear all the voices from our neighborhood who have come here. If our voices are not enough to sway the council to deny the application, I would ask if you would just please to defer it until some ambiguous, ambiguities regarding the property specifically are clarified, including but not limited to, I have a copy of the zoning commission minutes from that meeting. Nowhere did I see any indication of an inspection having been conducted to verify the claims made regarding the property, for example, the fact that it's a five-bedroom property on which presumably the maximum number of ten occupants was based. It's my understanding that two of the bedrooms are below grade, and according to all sources, Realtor.com, et cetera, to be considered a bedroom, a room needs to be seventy square feet with at least one dimension being seven feet, and there are two points of egress, minimum five point seven square feet for an egress window.
If you could wrap up, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just point out that the other handout that I provided shows, at least by outward appearances, it would indicate that the property is being rented without the permit. Our neighbors and I have witnessed for the past couple of weeks cars and trucks coming and going, parked in the street and in the driveway overnight. On Thursday night this past week, I counted eight cars associated with the property, five in the driveway and three in the street. I'll wrap it up there. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Reganbach, did you have one or two more individuals?
I did not have any more names to call, but if there's others here that would like to address it, I'd be fine with that.
Well, I would, I would wanna limit the number. I mean, I don't wanna go for an hour, and, you know, maybe we could have a few more. How many people are out there that actually want to speak to this issue? Can I see a number of hands? One, two, three, four, five, six. That's six. So typically, we allow about five minutes, and I would ask that you keep your comments down to about two and a half minutes, no more than three minutes, and then we can move on and take a...
And then we'll have the petitioner talk after.
Okay.
If that's okay.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. Come forward.
I live at twenty-three twenty-one East Bishop Avenue. Living on Bishop, I get a real view of what happens on Bishop, especially since the trails come in. I ride the trail most mornings, but Saturdays and Sundays especially, the number of people that take the trail, but their exit is Bishop, because there's not a whole lot going on after Bishop. So they start somewhere up Prospect or someplace like that, walk down the trail, exit on Bishop, so there's bicycles, tricycles, baby carriages, all sorts of runners, a lot of runners practice up and down the hill, and there's not a good view from the hill. It's so steep that you really can't see it sometimes, that there are other people coming into, into view. I would urge that you do not approve this. Thank you.
I'll keep this short as well. My name's Julie Knoll, and I mostly just wanna echo what Gary said. I guess unlike Gary, I'm brand new to Peoria. I also live on Bishop, and just wanna echo the safety concerns from a traffic perspective. I really appreciate the city's effort to foster more Airbnbs and short-term rentals. I think they're great. I think it has, you know, a positive impact on the community for sure, coming from a bigger city. I know that's one thing that Peoria has previously been lacking, so I really appreciate that effort, but this is just not the community for it, the specific neighborhood for it. Like Jim also said, there are a lot of hills. I've had so many close encounters myself. There's just blind spots. There's like three separate hills. It's a very popular route from the Rock Island Trail to Grandview. There's bikers, there's walkers all the time. It's just a very unique street in that sense, and I would just echo all the safety concerns that other people have brought up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly LaHood. I'm at twenty-two ten East Grandview Avenue, so I don't live across from it, but I drive by this house every day. My question is, would you put a hotel in a residential area? Hotels rent out by the day, the week, or more? A single-family house rented out as a short-term rental in a neighborhood is basically like a hotel. People come and go with few in the neighborhood ever knowing who they are. A short-term rental at twenty-three oh five Grandview. This house is on a sixty-foot lot. It's a deep lot, but it's a sixty-foot lot, a house on either side of it, so it's very narrow. So all their parking is gonna be like five or six trucks, which we saw this weekend, just in a line, and then nobody really wants to park, you know, in a line because you can't get out when you wanna get out. So then it ends up with two or three cars on the road also. But I think we saw one point eight at that house this weekend. Grandview Avenue, like everybody else says, is effectively, is also a sidewalk for all the residents here that bike, walk, or run. The street has a steep uphill, a steep downhill. We've always had to be really careful if you're going home in the evening, you're going west, you're going up a hill, you can't see anything. We all know that, so we go really, really slow. You could easily hit a child, a biker, anybody. You'd almost have to experience it to really, really know what I'm saying, though. Part of the value of this short-term rental for the tenant or the owner is the calm and orderly environment that surrounds it. This environment, though, has been built by the homeowners and the neighborhoods. Although the dwelling benefits from that environment, it contributes nothing itself, in fact, detracts from it completely. This has been a great neighborhood to live and raise a family. To have a house with a high turnover of inhabitants here will be extremely detrimental. The stability and security will be damaged. The long-term residents here have always felt safe because they know who their neighbors are, they can call them, you know whose cars are coming and going. Our homes and neighborhoods, all of Peoria, we need to keep them as our safe place. We shouldn't have to worry about who's there this week, who's there next week. And another point I just think we need to think about, with the current situation of all police departments anymore being understaffed, I don't think we should take a chance and increase the risk... increase the risk of crime in our own neighborhood. There's still a lot of people that have kids and grandkids that are there on Grandview Avenue all the time, and I would just say, please help keep our neighborhood safe, keep Peoria residents in Peoria by denying this application for a short-term rental. Thanks.
Thank you.
I live at 2301 East, 2401 East Grandview Avenue. I have lived in that neighborhood for forty-five years, my little house, before that, my dad, my grandfather, my great-grandfather. The neighborhood's always been a family neighborhood. It's had families, it's had older residents live there until they pass away. Me, I'm hoping to live there until I retire. Either the house will go first, or I'll go first. But what it is, it's a neighborhood for family. It's not a neighborhood for business. There's history in that neighborhood. I could tell you stories that my grandfather told me, my dad told me, but it's always just been for families. And I'm also concerned about the safety of the neighborhood with people coming in and out you don't know. We've always kept an eye on each other, we've always watched each other's houses when they're gone, and I'm concerned too, like they talk about the street. Everybody in my street knows, when you go over the hill by my house, you better slow down because you just don't know what's there. But what I really want to stress is it's always been a family neighborhood. People have lived there for long times. I've seen them, like I say, pass away, or they've lived there until they're retired, or the new people bring in, new families, new children, and it's just not a place for a business to be there, a rental or a business. It's just for families, it's for people who have lived there forever, and I'd hate to see this new B and B brought in there. That's all.
Thank you.
Mayor Riley, thank you for this opportunity. So I do want to, I'm Shannon Pop. I live diagonal across the street, 2224 East Grandview Avenue. I want to talk about safety that really should be high on the radar of everything else we look at. And there's two avenues to this safety. One is for people that are actually using it as a short-term rental, they already are using it as a short-term rental. A couple of weeks ago, I'm in the front yard mowing, and I see a little girl, my heart's racing, not because I'm nervous, I'm reliving this moment. She's wandering out in the middle of the road, at this crest of the hill, where our street runs east to west, so the sun is right in alignment. At certain two times a day, you cannot see, well, in the morning, you cannot see when you're coming up over that hill. And a little girl's wandering, and she's like, this isn't right. I take off running up the street at that crest of the hill. I'm not a tall person either, I can't see if a car's coming over, but we're used to the neighborhood because we live there. I scoop this little girl up, and I'm asking her, where do you live? Where are you from? And I'm running where there is. She's scared, I'm scared. And I'm walking down, and sure enough, someone comes out of this 2305 house. I return the daughter to the lady. People put their trust in a short-term rental like this business, thinking that it's a safe location. The street is not a safe location for a business, or people thinking that it's a safe location for their children either. That's one fold. They're going into this blindly. The other fold is people that back out of this driveway, it's a very narrow driveway. They're in a hurry because they're in a short-term rental, they're off to get somewhere early in the morning. They fly out of this driveway, not familiar with the street. That puts our own children at risk, our vehicles at risk, and our loved ones at risk. It's not a good spot. Thank you for your time.
Councilman Regenbach, do we have a commissioner that's speaking?
Mister petitioner, if you would like to make some comments as well, please.
Let's have this gentleman speak first, and then the commissioner.
Hello. My name's Scott Demannus. I live at 3710 North Breckenridge, which is right next to Grandview Avenue. I think that a lot of this is, maybe we're all a little hypersensitive because on the bigger picture, I don't want to offend anybody, but Peoria's going to hell. We see crime going on the streets, we see beggars on every corner, we see tent cities now going up like Los Angeles. And the one rental on our street, there's been a lot of crime in that neighborhood. Just the other day, we heard, I heard, just kept cussing yelling on a Sunday, just like somebody was very upset. It's kind of scary. I thought something bad's going to happen, but anyway, it was just, and that rental also, not too long ago, had a major drug bust in it. The house we're talking about, I've lived there my whole life, in that neighborhood, my whole life, and my house is there now. My mom's house is next door. So that house was owned by the chief police, Charles Mason. Some of you may not know that, but my friend, his son Chuck Mason, lived there, and I used to do the paper route, go up there at 3:30 in the morning, so I have a long history. I know that house. How they got five bedrooms in there, I'll never know. It's a small house, but apparently they did. So I just, I do echo what everyone said. Yeah, it has always been just a peaceful residential neighborhood, and it just seems like everything else, now they want to screw that up, and whatever happens, I guess, is, I guess, up to you all. It'd be sad. The one thing that I hear, there's a gentleman that walks his dog, I won't mention his name, I think he's kind of a wise old man, and, no, he's not old, I'm sorry, but a wise man, and I've gotten to know him fairly well, and he, I heard the other day that he's planning on leaving in a year, and he's kind of maybe had enough, and it's sad. I hear that all the time in Peoria, and I hope you guys are listening, because people are leaving. It's kind of like they come and it's like, we're out of here, we're out of here, we're going. And I don't care how many lights you put on the bridge, whatever, drive around our city. Does anyone not see the decay downtown? I go downtown, remember as a kid going downtown, it was hustle, bustle. There was, you know, it was a vibrant city, it was a beautiful city, and now it's just decay, and our streets are terrible. We pay so much taxes, where does it go? I guess in here, I didn't understand most of that, that was on there, you know, so it's sad, and I think we've all done our part. I know that. We've done it. My hospital, veterinary clinics at 3035 North Wisconsin Avenue, right across from Ron Stuben School, hope you've all seen the flowers. I worked very hard to make that inner-city beautiful. We service the inner-city, and I have since 1992, April 1st, Fools' Day, 1992. So it's emotional for me because I hate to see where we're going to go, you know, and I don't know how it gets turned around. I think a lot of people, and I'm kind of there, you know, at where you just feel like it's hopeless, and that's bad, that's sad. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner?
Petitioner Dimitri.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I will try to be very quick and answer most of the concerns that were brought up. I will initially start right backwards to the gentleman that was just here, and I will tell him that, and I can speak probably for my wife, we back to differ, Peoria is an amazing city. We moved here from Florida a little over five years ago, and we've lived in the Northeast. I've lived in New York, we lived together in Connecticut, my wife has lived in Philadelphia. We chose to set our roots here in Peoria. Peoria is amazing, and there is a lot of things that are going very well for Peoria. I just wanted to say this as someone that moved here a little over five years ago. With that being said, I will jump right into the concerns that the neighbors expressed, and I appreciate each and every one of you. The first concern is traffic, and traffic on Bishop. Actually, access to Grandview Avenue can be had three ways depending which way someone is headed into the area. If coming from Washington and from that bridge, access would be from Grandview Drive. If coming from the north part of town, from, you know, let's say, Donlap or North Peoria, for example, access again will be Grandview Drive. Access to Bishop will be only if someone is coming from downtown Peoria or east Peoria. Next issue that was raised was property value jump. I absolutely agree with that, that is true. This property was worth right around ninety thousand dollars a year ago. The reason for the value of this property currently is that there has been over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars invested in this property. Over eighty percent of the property has been gutted out, renovated, and I have sent pictures of the property to city staff. If someone is interested, they can take a look at it and see why the value is there. I'm sorry, I was taking notes. Next issue is on the number of short-term rentals. Based on current regulations by the city of Peoria, in that particular neighborhood, there can be up to three short-term rentals. There currently are none, that would be the first one, and as all of you know, each short-term rental is considered by itself on its own merits. Having a short-term rental approved does not automatically mean that there can be a second or a third one. Next one was the number of guests. A neighbor mentioned ten, and ten cars. There can be only six adults staying at the property, that's how we will advertise it, and as you know, we're going to be strict on that. We will also going to be limiting the number of cars, based on the feedback that we received today, to no more than four, and we're also open to limiting parking on the street, and pretty much, you know, asking our guests to not park on the street and use the driveway and the two-car garage. On crime, people are concerned about crime. I live in Peoria as well. I'm concerned. I can tell you that there are over fifteen short-term rentals in the immediate area, pretty much a couple of blocks down the road, and there are, there has been no issues that I am aware of from those short-term rentals. I do not believe that short-term rentals bring any kind of crime to an area. Inspection was raised, as you well know, every short-term rental, after it is approved by city council, city staff, and they're pretty diligent, come out to the property, they inspect it, they make recommendations after everything has been addressed, they come out and re-inspect, and that's when they certify and they allow for a license to be issued. There was a mention of cars parked over the last weekend at the property. We have some friends in town that are working on the roof on one of our other properties. I gladly invited them if they can stay at my empty property. It was not rented, the house is not advertised, it is not listed, and it's sitting, will sit empty until it is approved. I mentioned about parking, and at the end, I would like to go back real quick to Bishop Avenue. I'm kind of hearing two different things. One is that Bishop Avenue draws a lot of people, a lot of people come to the area, and they come because of the bike trail, and also I'm hearing that it is dangerous. If the street is dangerous and signs are not adequate, you know, I would say that the city should consider revisiting the signs, and I would also add that all those people that are coming from different areas and are going through Bishop to access the trail, they haven't had any issues up until now. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and I apologize for referring to you as commissioner, you're the property owner. Correct?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
You're welcome. Okay.
Can I have a word, please? It will take less than a minute, and I just want to issue on some of the comments that were made, and from someone who is, let's say, recently relocated here to the area of Peoria less than, you know, six years ago, I think that Peoria is an attractive area to move in. It's attractive for what it has to offer, which is, you know, an appealing place where to raise children, which all of you, all of you agree, myself included, I have two young children, and people coming to our short-term rentals are not criminals. They're people that are low-abiding citizens, people that respect traffic lights like I do when I stay on an Airbnb elsewhere, especially when they are located in a neighborhood that we expect families to live in. So I feel offended by the generalization that people that will come to a neighborhood where we are raising children and families, that people are not going to respect the area. I think that's very mistaken, and will be a very sad reason not to provide this resource to the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know my colleagues all remember the year-long process that we went through as we discussed short-term rentals and the conditions and the angst we went through to make sure that we got it right. I think we came up with a pretty good approach. We set some standards, we set some expectations, we set a process in place that allows for the Planning and Zoning Commission to vet this, for there to be a public hearing, for there to be concerns raised, and then it comes to the council for final approval to make conditions to that or reject it outright. Having discussed this with a lot of my colleagues, with a lot of staff, with Corporation Council, with the conditions and expectations being met, we would need to have a tangible, logical reason to deny this request. I can tell you that a lot of the comments were very compelling and had a lot of personal impact, but I'm not sure how much they're based on the fact that we need to be looking at as we contemplate whether to approve this or not. I would like to point out that the petitioners are Peoria residents. They live and raise their family here. They maybe haven't been here twenty-five years, but I think it's critical to note that they chose to live here, and that of all the places that they've been, they're putting down roots here. This isn't their first STR. They are financially invested in Peoria. And ironically, before this even came to planning and zoning, when the yellow signs went up, I got phone calls from two separate neighbors of the folks encouraging me to listen to them, that they do quality work, that they only follow the rules. So the standards clearly have been met here as far as the legal checkmarks that we need to check. So let's look at some of the emotional aspects of it, because those play a critical part in our perception of it, regardless of what the checkmarks may say. When I went up there, and I've been up there more in the last two weeks than I have been in the last two years admittedly, I always came in off Grandview Drive. I never came in off Bishop and Harmon and/or Breckenridge, so I would think that if you're coming in from out of town and you put that address in, that it would take you the shortest way, which would be one turn off Grandview rather than multiple turns. Admittedly, the street needs repair, but I get calls about that frankly just about every week, so I can't deny it because the street needs repair. The question about the number of bedrooms, and does this actually meet code? After the council approves a short-term rental, that's when our code enforcement department steps up, and they will actually, the, address the fire codes, they will address the egress from any bedrooms that could be in the basement. So it's not just the petitioner's word for it that we take, but we actually have city staff that makes sure that it does in fact meet those, meet those requirements that we expect and the standards that we... we expect and the standards that we have set. We've been doing this now for about a year, I think. The process to get it all up and running took about that long, and now we've been approving them, and we heard a lot of concerns about, about the type of people these STRs could attract. And I think it's important to note that it's surprising how many of these are the high-end business travelers, and in my own experience, our Merrill Lynch market executive is moving here from Michigan, and she lived in an STR for the first few months because she couldn't, didn't want to live in an apartment because she was here, but didn't have a house. So that's a lot of, I think there's an unfair assumption about who is actually going to be living in there. We have not had any follow-up complaints to our code enforcement or the police department since we've started this about trouble in an STR. Peoria Heights has a much more lax approach to this. They just have the short-term rentals go through their normal landlord registration process, and I talked with the mayor and their police chief, and they said they have not had any complaints in the time that they've been allowing STRs in the Heights. So with that said, I think that the consistency, the expectations, respecting the process, put us on the spot to approve this, and I would move to do so.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Additional discussion, Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We've been very consistent and deliberate about how we've managed the STR process and rolled it out amongst the community. We have not picked one neighborhood over the other. We've treated every neighborhood the same, based on an equal and same amount of criteria and characteristics. We've evaluated them along the same rule, regardless of whether it's in the south end of Peoria or off Grandview Drive or in the 5th District. We've treated them all the same. We've had these similar conversations each time. But at the end of the day, we've come back to the same place, that we have not had issues with the ones that have been approved thus far. We've not had issues with the ones that the petitioners have brought before us prior to now, and we don't have any legal basis, in my opinion, to justify saying that it can't go here based on location. If, post approving it, there were issues, I would wholeheartedly support pulling the special use in the future and not allowing the petitioner to continue to operate, but I don't see that being a challenge, and I don't see the challenges in this neighborhood being different than those in the other neighborhoods that we have approved them in. And in my opinion, we have to continue to exercise consistency in how we handle the process. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to amplify points made narrowly. How's that? We did, after a year's, or a little more than a year's worth of discussion, we did end up with a lot of trial and error setting the rules for these, for short-term rentals. And then we added that these things should come to the council afterwards to see if we like it or not, which I oppose, because I think if someone follows the rules, then they ought to be approved. If, and in this case and in all these cases, people have followed the rules and then they come here, and we can just say thumbs up or thumbs down, that, to me, is called arbitrary law. That's bad law. These folks have followed the rules that we set up, and therefore, and they also, whether it's relevant or not, they have a track record. And so I'll be in favor of this, because I think these things should end at the zoning board. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Reganbuck?
Yes, one thing I wanted to add as a condition to my motion was that, based on the comments, that we limited this to four cars, that there would be a four-car maximum. So that would be an additional condition to this use.
You seconded that? Council, I'm talking to Councilmember Euler. Did you, you agree to second that? Okay, you seconded the original motion though, right? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, we decided, after deliberations like Councilman Reganbuck and others have mentioned, when we talked about how to govern short-term rentals, that we would have a special use process. We would require a special use permit, and as the advocate for establishing a special use, and as, from being an attorney here at the city for seven years and taking many cases forward, trying to get special uses, we put the special use process in place so that neighbors and residents that are going to be next to these short-term rentals can have their say and can voice their concerns to the city council. That is the whole purpose of it. And in this case in particular, where you have 95% of the surrounding residents and neighbors, 57 out of 60 houses, this body should be listening to those citizens and those residents. This is, it is not an appropriate neighborhood. This is full of families, there's also these additional safety and traffic concerns. It is not appropriate. The narrowness of the street, although the four-car limit is a move in the right direction, so I thank Councilman Reganbuck for doing that. But, and I dispute with what Councilor Euler is saying, we have not treated these the same. All the ones that have come forward to us as a city council are in the older neighborhoods of the city. They are not in the 5th District. They affect those of us that live in the older neighborhoods, and we want to keep the older neighborhoods a place where people want to stay and raise their families. So I am, he admittedly opposed to this. This is not an appropriate place for this short-term rental, based on the concerns of the residents that live there day in and day out, and that are going to have to live with the decision that we make. So I implore the rest of the council to consider those neighbors that you've heard here tonight, the emails that you've had, and what your duty is. This body has become so tone deaf to neighbors and concerns of our residents, and it's got to stop. We have to become more pro-neighborhood. You know, as a long time, I'm not an original Peorian, I moved here 27 years ago in an older neighborhood and have lived there ever since. I've been a longtime neighborhood advocate, and we need to keep our older neighborhoods strong, and we do not do that by ignoring the residents that live there and by putting in a short-term rental that they oppose. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to everyone who provided comments and emails on this matter tonight. Thank you to the petitioner, provided some comments as well too. And also thank you to Councilman Reganbuck, because I can tell you have done a lot of due diligence in this. I understand the anxiety that is around the short-term rental. I do have to clarify that, Councilmember Jensen, we have approved Airbnb specifically in District 4. I know all too well about one in particular, so I will have to state that just for the record. But one of the things that I hope, though, that if this does pass tonight, because of how close-knit your neighborhood is, I believe that there's opportunity for you all to work together to make sure that this is a potential addition, a positive addition to your neighborhood. You have potential approval of petitioners who live in the City of Peoria that you can call, and I hope that that dialogue is open and available, and that is something that, the one that I worked on in my district, was to make sure that that bridge was open. And so when matters did come up, they can address those and get those matters worked out. So I do hope, though, that whatever happens tonight, that you all can work together as a neighborhood, preserve the fabric of your neighborhood, because that is a great neighborhood as you all have dressed tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I do appreciate all of the comments tonight on both sides of this situation. I also think that we, as a council, we have to find balance in situations like this, and even though the petitioners, they have done their due diligence, and Councilmember Reganbuck, you have done your homework, we did agree that we would look at these situations on a case-by-case basis. And I don't think, just because somebody may meet all the criteria and get through zoning, that that is an automatic green light. It is our job as a council to find a balance between it. Having said that, I do believe there are neighborhoods that would welcome Airbnbs. I'm not opposed to them. We said we would review these on a case-by-case basis. We've decided that as a city, we didn't want to be a city full of loan sharks. We put a limit on those. We put a limit on the Airbnbs, but still, we have to make sure that we weigh the comments in each situation critically. That means you have to listen to the residents of the community. They are the ones that have to live in this community and have to deal with whatever circumstances, and that's not to say that they're going to be negative or bad. So I cannot support this, because I have to agree with the residents who are living directly in those communities. That's not to say there are not communities where Airbnbs will prosper, but in this case, the residents have spoken clearly. And so, for those reasons, I would have to vote to deny this permit.
Well, I think everybody knows how I feel about boarding houses in our community, because that's what they are. And how we got from where we were in the beginning to where we are now, at no point in time did we have a standard approach that we would use for each and every property that would come to our attention. That's why we have a special use process. If Councilman Kelly would have prevailed, it wouldn't even be coming to us. It wouldn't even be a matter for the Peoria City Council. I think Denise Jackson is correct, and certainly I have tried to look at every short-term rental that's come up in District 2 on a case-by-case basis. You know, we ran into a big bump in the road as it relates to the whole shared drive concept, and we're working through these bugs, but I do think we have to listen to the neighbors. And so I know that Councilman Reganbuck has given this a lot of thought. He's a very conscientious councilman. I just, if this were in my district, I would move for denial, but I don't think that surprises any of you around the horseshoe, given where I've been. And I have approved short-term rentals by this very petitioner in other parts of the city and in my district, where I thought there would not be any detrimental harm done. So, thank you, Councilor Jackson. You said most everything I wanted to say, but I'm not voting to be negative toward you, Councilman Reganbuck. You know how difficult this has been, and so I'll be voting no for the reason I just outlined.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just say that, Councilman Allen, thank you for pointing out that these have been approved in other parts of the city, and in fact, I hesitated bringing this up earlier, but there's an Airbnb right next door to my house. I have two teenage sons, and we're on a dead end also, and there's kids playing in the street, and we've made friends with people from Maine, Ohio, Mendota, Illinois, and this last weekend, there was a group of guys in town for a golf outing meeting halfway between Chicago and St. Louis. I would just say that this is what you make it, because every time I see somebody out in the neighbor's yard playing bags, I go and introduce myself, not as the councilman, but as the neighbor. Why are you in Peoria? What brought you here to an Airbnb on Briarcrest? And it's amazing, there's, like I said, the golf outing, there's, did you know there's a big frisbee golf event that takes place? That's where those guys from Maine came from. So I would just say, don't make assumptions about who's going to be coming there, but embrace it as a chance to show them what a cool city Peoria is and what we have to offer and what Peoria people are all about. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. And I just want to comment and thank all of those who have expressed your views and opinions for or against this STR. You know, I think a lot of work has been done on the part of Councilmember Reganbuck and really trying to weigh this issue, and it's not easy. It's not easy to make these decisions. I did hear from numerous residents in the area about a safety issue, and regardless of how the vote goes tonight, I would ask Mr. Manager for Public Works to look into the potential safety issue of children crossing a street or people backing up. If that's an area, regardless of whether it has a STR or not, if there's a safety issue, perhaps there's some type of signage, some type of barrier, something potentially that can be addressed to mitigate the safety concern that we heard tonight. So with that, we have a motion on the floor to approve. We have a second. It looks like there's no more discussion, so I would ask everyone to cast your ballots. Motion passes with three nays, Grab, Jackson, and Jensen. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk?
22-324 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R1 single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 3119 North Knoxville Avenue, and including for access only, the property located at 3207 North Knoxville Avenue in a Class R1 single-family residential district and a Class R3 single-family residential district. And on your desk, there is a handout with an updated council communication and ordinance.
Councilmember Grab?
Director Doolan, where are you? There you are. I asked you to prepare a yellow sheet because I wanted to add a condition before I would approve this. And I've discussed this with the petitioner, and I don't think it'll be startling for him. It's kind of a different animal of a property entirely, huge yard of Knoxville, but there is something called Lynn Hill Court behind it. It's a It's a very fragile neighborhood, and so what have I asked you to do, Director?
Thank you, Councilmen. The yellow sheet you have adds the underlying sentence that's indicated, I believe, on the second page, Condition Eight, which limits, asks the petitioner to cut off access of the property, so Lynn Hill is no longer an exit to the property. It's a very unique property off of Knoxville where you can cut through the neighboring property, and there's a little access road off Lynn Hill. This would prevent the guests at the STR from using that as an exit. They'd have to block that off, which would still allow them access to Knoxville. In looking at the address, most of the directions that are given to how to get there, I'll say come and go from Knoxville, so I don't believe that should be an issue as well.
Yes, and the petitioner indicates to me that he and she will both encourage people to, and we're going to discourage it, but we're going to encourage people to enter the property and exit in kind of a strong way with the condition we've added and do it off Knoxville. So with that, I move for approval with that additional condition. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there a second to that motion, seconded by Councilmember Euler? Any additional discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion passes with one nay. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash three-two-five is a communication from the city manager and fire chief with request to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three biennial budget related to the use of general fund balance in amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-two for reimbursement received from Bay Area for fire services.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pulled this item just because I just wanted to commend the chief and the city manager for this good, smart thinking. I don't know if we've ever done this in the past. But to get reimbursed for a hundred and one thousand dollars for all the time and work that our firefighters did during the fight of that fire, which I think lasted a number of days. So, good work, and I hope we continue to do that. And with that, I move to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Discussion, Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a point of clarification, Mr. Manager. The extensive expense to which the city went in this fire came out of, I suppose, the budget of the Fire Department. Okay? And the reimbursement, I believe, is going into the general fund, not back into the Fire Department's budget. Is that correct?
No, it is going back into the Fire Department's budget, which is in the general fund. So it's being reimbursed. The revenue is being received. It will be accounted for in the Fire Department's budget in the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor and a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at first readings. Twenty-two dash three-three-one is a communication from the city manager and chief diversity and inclusion officer with a request to concur with the Joint Commission on Racial Justice and Equity to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance regarding the racial equity impact assessment.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have with us this evening the two co-chairs of the Joint Commission on Racial Justice and Equity, and I'd like to ask Mary Peterson and Tim Burci to come forward to just give some history on how we got to this point and what's in the ordinance, and then I'll be happy to take it from there and answer any questions.
Good. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Peterson, and I am one of the co-chairs of the Joint Commission for the city of Peoria and the county on the racial justice equity. The commission was launched in July of twenty-twenty-one. It is a community-led collaborative effort that is comprised of one-hundred-and-fifty-six individuals here in Peoria, the city of Peoria and the county of Peoria. It's composed of a steering committee and eight targeted subcommittees on specific areas. The commission is working to create a multifaceted, coordinated, strategic plan to reduce the racial inequities across the community. Using data, input, and feedback from the residents, best practices from other communities, the commission is leading a charge to promote inclusive community discussions, develop information, educational activities to increase the community's understanding of racial justice and equity, as well as the local efforts underway. The steering committee has put together a four-phase plan. Identification of key data indicators for data-driven process, the development of a strategic plan based on the subcommittee areas, the development of an implementation process, and the monitoring of these parties responsible for the implementation and the movements of the indicators. We have several of our commissioners who are here with us tonight and have been here. Please raise your hand. And I'm sure that we have others who are online. That is just a brief overview of where we've been, and the question would be, where are we going next?
Thank you very much, Mary. And just as, perhaps if I could do this, as a point of just personal privilege, I was sitting in the audience thinking tonight, I believe this is the fourth decade in which I've made a presentation at the city council. And I can tell you, I can tell you, I've always been treated with respect and attention, and I appreciate that, and I just hope that I've always, in my dealings with you, have always responded in kind. So thank you very much. I'm here tonight with Mary to talk about our process, but in particular, I'm excited to talk about a particular proposal which we're presenting to the council, and that is an REIA ordinance. Simply put, what an REIA ordinance is, is a call for the city to evaluate its impact upon racial communities prior to taking any material actions. And what it envisions is a process developed by the city manager in this case, or to be developed by the city manager in this case, which would determine the impact of proposed city actions on our different racial communities, particularly upon marginalized communities. I can tell you that the process that we've talked about has been something that we've been in discussion with the city manager about, and that, I don't mean to speak for Patrick, but I think, and he'll talk about it, but it's something that we've actually done as a city to some extent before, in a budget process that was utilized by the city, I think, two years ago, prior to COVID. The same types of principles that we're talking about here were employed. You might say, then, well, have other cities done this? And the answer would be yes. Most notable among them would be Seattle and Washington, DC. Well, is it only big cities? No, not really. Dubuque, Iowa, has such an ordinance itself. And so while these may not be common city to city to city, more and more cities are adopting these, and they're gaining general acceptance in communities of all sizes. You might ask, well, are we reaching out to other governmental bodies in this area? And the answer is absolutely. This will come before the county in October, and then we hope to reach out after the city and county have approved this to our school districts, to other villages and towns within the county, and as some of you might anticipate in my situation, to local park districts to see if they would adopt the same procedure. Two final comments. You know, questions have been raised about our community and its commitment to racial justice in national media. There have been, we're all familiar with this, there have been particular articles and studies which have suggested that our city is not as open to racial justice as it might be. I would say this, this vote on this ordinance gives you a singular opportunity to answer that in a resounding voice, that the answer to those critics is, no, we are not like that. We will do better. We can do better. And the final thing I would say is this, and it occurred to me at the very beginning of this meeting, when Mayor Ali led us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. That is a pledge. It's not just words. It's a pledge we all make. We stand up, we put our hands on our hearts, and we pledge. And what do we pledge to? Well, at the very end, it's liberty and justice for all. This ordinance speaks to just that. Assuring that there is justice for all by assuring in the processes that you're about that there is a view to racial justice, and there is intentionality developed in the process to ensure that that goal is achieved. I ask you, I implore you, and I encourage you, when the vote comes up on this two weeks from now, to vote in favor of this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burci and Ms. Peterson. This is a great opportunity, I think, for Peoria to, as you use the word intentional. We were intentional over a year ago when we voted unanimously to support the establishment of the Joint Commission on Racial Justice and Equity with the county, the city and the county together. I was really thrilled to be at your annual report-out meeting and see such a presence of the committees, the eight committees plus the steering committee, that have been working for over a year with intentionality to focus on addressing issues of racial injustice and racial justice in Peoria. So I'm really proud of the work. I just want to thank the two of you because I know that you've put in countless hours in, you know, showing your leadership and being passionate about addressing this issue. And I want to thank all of those that are listening online or on television, all of those that are in our audience that have participated in this process, because you've been committed to this process for a very long time. So, you know, this is not the end, this is the beginning. I think this is a step toward our objective to end racial discrimination within the city and the county and throughout our region. But I think it's a first step, and this is a first reading, so it's open for discussion. But I just want to say thank you to everyone who has participated in this process. I applaud your work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to echo your same sentiments. This is a step in the right direction. We understand that achieving racial equity and social justice, it's a roadmap. It isn't a destination. And I'm excited that the city and the county is taking this journey to ensure that our region, when you think of the city and the county, is welcoming for everyone, and everyone has a true sense of belonging, and that is the ultimate objective. So I'm excited to see this. I challenge my colleagues around the horseshoe over the next couple of weeks, dive into this, ask the questions, reach out to the co-chairs, reach out to the chief diversity, equity, inclusion officer of the city, Ms. Green, and really dive into this. So that way, when we come back here in a couple of weeks, we can really have a great conversation. We can address any potential uncertainties, because this is great for our city, this is great for our county, and so we want to make sure that we are all on the same page with this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I really do believe that this body and this organization is and has been very intentional toward racial justice. And our city too, I think by and large is. We elected an African-American mayor. Most of the voters who voted for you were white people. I'm all for racial justice, et cetera. Okay? I just want to know what this is going to accomplish, other than sounding good. This says, "Under scrutiny will be any policies, programs, services, or budgets that apparently Perhaps we have some. I don't know. I'm not aware of any, but perhaps we have some. And I think we have the wherewithal to address those at this point. When we talk about any, I just wonder, are there things on the agenda tonight that would require the manager to create an assessment report on those items? It says, "Any policies." I mean, I don't know exactly what that means. I don't imagine it means that people who are going to clean out the sewer lines or what. But I don't know. I don't know where this might go. Data was spoken of. I like data. If I really get too bound up in data, I ask Councilman Seer, who left on purpose, because he knew I was going to say this, I ask him to explain it to me. But if we're going to use data, we need baseline data to start with. And with an ordinance like this, I think we need to say, look, here's where we are, so that these programs and whatnot, so that their good effect can be measured. If we just talk about these things and pass ordinances and, you know, it looks good, but it doesn't do much good. I am very much in favor of, certainly there is some discrimination in our city, certainly, certainly. I don't know that we'll ever get rid of it all, you know? But institutionally, I don't know of any institutions of any size in our city that don't have minorities working for them. I don't know of any neighborhoods that don't have minorities living in them. You know, those days, we're living, sometimes we're living a little bit in the past, I think. If we have work to do, I'm for it. But I don't want to just get into something because it sounds good. I'm very willing to get into something because it has good promise. Perhaps a good way to start is to say in the next two weeks, here are some programs that really, that we have, that City Hall has. Here are some policies the City Hall has that could be better in terms of racial justice. Also, if we're going to adopt an ordinance like this, it seems to me that we need baseline data, not just saying, well, we did this and we were all very well-intentioned. But, you know, all these things cost money and time, and so I would ask us all to think about those things in the next two weeks. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. And I want to respond by saying that you're making some valid points and that the RJE Commission is very data-driven. In fact, over the past year, that's really what they've been doing, is collecting, identifying the problems and collecting data in all these eight different areas, from housing to education to jobs to, all those areas where inequities exist based upon race. And I know many of you received that document, the research document that was put together by a charity gun at Illinois Central College, and we all got a copy of it. But it shows the areas where there's been marginalized people. There's great disparities based upon race in these eight areas. So baseline data, we have that in many different areas. And, you know, what And, you know, what cities or counties, municipalities have done, and we started that process at Illinois Central College when I was there because I was part of leading that effort, scrubbing your policies, your practices, your systems to remove those barriers that are based upon race. And some of them, you know, in our law, some of them still exist in American law, unfortunately. And, you know, we have a process of trying to get those off the books because they're still being imposed in some regard. We've had redlining that has occurred in cities across America, including this city, Peoria. So that's, you know, your questions are good questions. You're wanting results. I think we all want results. But the commission has a focus on race. We have struggled with racial issues in America and right here in Peoria for a long time. We've been called a lot of bad names in Peoria, like the worst, the worst place for African-Americans to live. We've been accused of having the most segregated schools in some of the most segregated neighborhoods based upon race. It's been an issue that we have struggled with, but I would say an issue that we want to improve upon, that we have to be focused, we have to be intentional, and we have to zero in on. It's not easy, right? And it's not going to happen overnight. But this, in my opinion, is a start, a step in the right direction. So I know there's plenty of other things.
Councilman Regenbaum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate the one word that you just said stuck out to me, and that was intentional. Because we all have good intentions, but are we intentionally making our policy reflect those? And I think that's something that this will be very useful for. If I can ask the manager a couple of questions about how this will operate going forward. As I look at agenda item, it has financial impact, neighborhood concerns, EEO certification. Which of the goals identified in the plan does this advance? Would this be listed as a similar item then going forward? Or how do you envision this being communicated with us?
Well, I think the ordinance calls for a worksheet to be developed that would ask the six questions that are part of the ordinance and that we would work through and have the departments respond to those six questions as part of that. So, I mean, if we think about that, and Councilman Kelly asked a good question about, are there ordinances on the agenda tonight that maybe could be looked at through this? I think that the next item on the agenda is about video gaming, and I think that's one that you could look at that and say, "How has video gaming affected marginalized communities and racial communities in our city?" And that's something we could analyze as part of this ordinance, is then looking at that, saying, "Okay, what has been the impact?" Then you start to drill into those six questions. And those questions are, "How does this action advance racial and ethnic equity in the community? Have you analyzed the impact of this action will have on racial and ethnic communities? What is that impact? What is your data and how was it developed? Have you reached out to receive feedback from each of the affected communities? What was their input?" That's a key point. Have we reached out and talked to the community to see what that is? Next, have you considered alternative approaches which would better and promote equity? And then finally, what, if any additional resources, would be needed to better promote equity through this action? So those would be the questions that we would be asking our team at the city to go through and analyze and report that back to you. So this is really another lens that we look at our actions through in order to be able to come forward with that. One of the other key points that's in this ordinance is that, is really trying to start slow. And we put language in the ordinance that does state that "The scope of this implementation shall be phased to ensure that staff have been trained in the tool and the concepts and principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion," just so that we make sure that everyone is using the same language, everyone understands the same baseline. And I think that that goes then to Councilman Kelly's point as well about getting that data. The commission has identified, I think, 38 indicators that they're starting to pull together. We hope to get that compiled so that we can get a dashboard prepared for the city and the county, looking at both city data and county data with that in order to present that out so that we can talk about those indicators and what that baseline data might look like.
Will Peoria County adopt a similar dashboard, or will they alter that to their specific...
It'll be a joint dashboard from the commission that'll have the city and county data on.
And then will encourage the school board and the other governing entities to join as well?
Correct.
Is Peoria a leader in this, or are there other communities in Illinois or throughout the country that are developing this? Are we going to be the one that others come and say, "How did you do that?"
I wouldn't say that we're necessarily a leader here. I think that there are a lot of communities that are doing some interesting work across the entire diversity, equity, and inclusion space. I think that Mr. Burci recommended, or mentioned Dubuque, Iowa, which is a community similar to our size, maybe a little bit smaller, that's been doing a lot of work in that space. I think that there are others. Melody Green and I are participating in a program right now through the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus that's talking about how you operationalize racial equity. And we're focusing on, and the training with that is focused on some of the institutional challenges that you have with, when you think of a city government and you think of our code book, which is here next to Ms. Peterson, or Ms. Kaputsko, sorry, that really, you know, is a compendium of different policies and procedures that we've put in place over the years, some that go back probably 70 years, you know, and some that have been codified in state law. So as you start to look at that, as you start to break that down, there may be some time that we need as staff to be able to work through this, ask those questions, and be able to build something forward that we can bring back to you. And so that's why we wanted to go with that kind of phased-in approach.
Sounds like a work in progress, but I love the intentionality of it, so.
Thank you, Councilman Regenbaum. And I would say Peoria is a leader in Illinois in even establishing this 150-people joint county-city commission. There's none like this in Illinois, the size, and I think with the scope that we have. I think there are some other cities in the nation, but in Illinois, I would say that we do stand out. And our city manager did present at IML at a large attended workshop on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and Peoria gained a lot of respect from that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank you for your leadership on this important issue, as well as thank Mr. Burci and the other co-chair for your work, and all the members that are here and in the audience of the commission. It's important work, and I'm glad to see things, this coming forward, and I look forward to more things coming forward. I do have a few questions. I guess with regard, I'm kind of curious exactly how it'll work, like what happens after you conduct the examination or the assessment?
So I think after we would conduct the assessment, after we go through the questions, we'll put that into that worksheet, and that will be attached as part of the council communication. We'll just include that information, you know, as an attachment to those agenda items that come forward. And I think that that way, the examination is there for the council to look at that and to be able to take that into consideration as you see those items coming forward.
Okay, so if you, but say you do the assessment and there's some red flags and there's some concerns, do you then go back and modify the proposal that's coming to us or your recommendation before it comes to us?
If there's red flags, I think we would go back and have to take a look at that and see what we would do to address it through that same lens and say, "Is there, are there differences, changes in the recommendation that we would make? Are there changes in the budget that we would make because of that?" And I think those are going to be part of this question as we move through this process. I think that's going to come forward, and we're going to see, hopefully it's evident that something may come forward, and then we can talk about what is that impact and how we could change that to promote racial equity.
Okay, and then how will it work? I noticed there's a paragraph in here that "The decision of the city to refrain from taking an action shall be deemed a city action for purposes of this ordinance." So, and that's paragraph seven. So how will that work if the city council refuses, you know, votes against something or doesn't approve something? Then when do you do, then do you do the assessment after the fact? And then how do you bring that forward that are in action and according to the assessment violates, you know, these six questions or racial justice?
I think that's a good question. I don't, I think we were looking at, you know, where we would come and bring something forward for action by the council here. So that's something we can certainly look into before we bring the final ordinance back.
Okay, because I mean, I see that this potentially, when we didn't take action on an issue earlier this year, that could have been assessed as viol... You know, I'm just curious how that's going to work.
No, that's a really good point.
We'd like to understand that before we move this forward, or we might have to tweak the ordinance.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
Okay, and then I have one more point. It's actually, I do have a concern with section three, and I know it's standard language to repeal any conflicting ordinances on the book or policies. And it just seems really very sweeping and broad. So I would be more comfortable if we're going to include this in the ordinance to have a, and it may be asking a lot, but to have our legal department do a review and let us know what ordinances and policies we would be repealing or that may be in conflict with us. And if that's, you know, I know that's a lot to ask. If that's not possible, maybe we just don't include that in the ordinance.
Thank you.
I don't know if you have a comment or...
Thank you, Councilwoman Jensen. I think that's certainly possible. I have some, as you were talking, that popped to mind. For example, the ordinance on, you know, that helped establish the committee are ordinances that deal with our fair employment or our fair housing commissions. So I think we could certainly do a cursory review. My concern is, as we get into reviewing the code, there may be multiple code sections that we need to identify, but we can probably at least give you the major sort of outliers that we think could be impacted.
Okay, because my concern is the way that this language is so broad, there could be something on the books. I just, I want to know if there's something in violation, I guess, before we get rid of it, you know, and why. So I just would like a little more analysis on that.
Sure. I mean, that's a fair point, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I appreciate all the comments and all the work that's gone into this. I think the biggest thing that I'd like to see is, give me some of the meat to this whole thing, the agenda item. I'm a little bit disappointed with what appears to be lack of work in the specific agenda item presentation to us, because I know significant amounts of work have gone into actually doing the work behind the scenes. But, you know, give us some of the, what other communities have done and what that meant to them so that we can go out and give that sales pitch ourselves. Because the change has to start with us and we have to be a part of it, and there isn't enough here for me to go out and say, "This is why we want to do what we want to do here, and this is what the vision is." And that's what I'd really like to see in this agenda item, is how can I go out and talk to constituents about why we're doing what we're doing because this community did it, and this is what it meant to them, and this is what it changed in their city, so that we can actually be a functional part of that? And then there were also references made about assessments and that they were analyzed, and I think it'd be good if we could see some of that as well.
I'm glad you asked for that. It does exist. This group has studied a lot of that information. Some of it got reported out at the annual report back in May or back in June. But there is a report that's coming out, from what I understand, from this commission. It's being written, is that correct, Tim and Mary? It's being written. When do you anticipate having that finished? Should I look at Jonathan Wright or...
..........................................................................................
Okay, so by the end of the year. But there is, that information does exist. There are some presentations, I think. Any specific information that you want in advance of next meeting, which is October the 11th, Councilman Euler, I'm sure we can figure out how to get that to you.
Thank you.
That's great. Councilman Graham?
Well, I'd rather this particular impact assessment tool be used to address problems that affect all the disadvantaged people within our community. And practically putting this into effect, gosh, I served with 11 city councils, six city managers, and I kind of thought that we were trying as much as possible to give people a hand up. And when we have awarded contracts here in this city, we have done everything we can to assure that we take a look at our minority businesses. I don't believe you've been a failure the last 10 years, and I don't think the last 11 city councils have been failures as it regards racial justice. Now, let's just get down to specifics because we can all say we want God, Mother, apple pie, and racial justice. Let's just get down to specifics. Mr. Manager, we have here item 22-307 on video gaming licenses. Okay, we're going to have to make a comment, and if this passes, on whether we should take this action or not based on the impact it would have as relates to, not the disadvantaged, although I'd rather see it, say that, but as it relates to, I guess, black people?
Yes, and minority communities, yes.
And then, same thing, take a look at the next item, adult-use cannabis dispensary. Is this good for black people? I mean, what's the recommendation going to be? That this is something positive and good for disadvantaged people regardless of race to go to the video gaming machines or to go out and buy cannabis? I don't know how you're going to craft that because there's a lot of value assumptions that are going to have to go into this. So I see this as being a problem. I admire our president, especially when he says, "We need to work to give more of our citizens breathing room and help." Believe with intentionality. City councilors have done just that through the years. I'm not saying that we can't do more because we are not a perfect country. You know why? Because we don't have perfect people. But I just don't know how this translates, just looking at the next two agenda items, how it's going to work. So what I need to do then, in fairness, is think about this, let everybody take the input that's coming with the first reading to heart and come back with more specifics. And I know Tim Burci, he was kind enough to reach out, because I asked you, Mr. Manager, when I was on vacation, how this would differ from what we've been doing as councils. I guess we're going to put it on steroids, and you were nice enough to say, "Hey, you know, contact..." And he was nice enough to say, Chairman Burci, in reference to this. So I'm going to be working with him, both the co-chairs on this and what it means. And, boy, I think from the administration standpoint, there are some pretty sticky... And, boy, I think from the administration standpoint, there are some pretty sticky wickets here. But especially, you know, what's the best recommendation for this racial group or disadvantaged people? Let's just be honest about it. So, but, but I'm open to it. But those are some of my comments tonight, Mayor.
Okay. A lot of training has to go into, you know, this kind of endeavor. That's what they did in, in King County, Washington. They trained all of the city, all the county staff extensively, so that they would get a better understanding of how to implement something like this.
And Mayor, I have oftentimes felt that we should not have a chief diversity officer in this city. Because if we're really doing our job as a city and we have the appropriate municipal culture, this should be pervasive through the, throughout the entire city organization, that we don't have one department focusing on this. And I've seen this through the years happen. I don't think we have the culture, apparently not, maybe we do, but to require a special position, I think that should already be done through all of our department heads and all of our staff through the city manager.
Ideally, Councilman, but if everybody's responsible, nobody's responsible. You have to have a champion. You have to have a champion that helps all these departments to, to move, you know, their, the agenda along. So it's, it's about, you know, having that leader in position that, that can help and lead the charge.
Appreciate your input on that. Thank you.
Is there a motion to move, receive and file, moved by Councilmember Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilmember Allen? All in favor? Please cast your ballots. I mean, not all in favor. Cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. 22-307 is a communication from the city manager and interim corporation counsel with a request to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 18, article four, section 18-99 of the city's municipal code to revise the issuance of video gaming licenses.
Counsel?
Madam Mayor, at the last council meeting, we proposed an ordinance that would reduce the video gaming waiting period from 24 months to 12 months for new businesses. After listening to council's conversations at that meeting, we, the ordinance you have in front of you reduces that further to a six-month period. And then we provided some additional information in response to a question from Councilwoman Jensen to clarify that the city's municipal code itself does not have a limit on the number of licenses per establishment, however, the state of Illinois Gaming Code does, and that limit is six unless you're a truck stop. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, any questions for council on this? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to commend you for bringing it down to six months. As, as you might recall, I was in favor of no waiting period at all, but six months is a lot better than a couple of years, so thank you.
Is there a motion? Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Move to approve at the six-month change. Thank you.
Is there a second by Councilmember Graepp? Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay seer. Madam Clerk?
22-332 is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to concur with recommendation from the planning and zoning commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending an existing special use in a Class C2 large-scale commercial district to allow for an adult-use cannabis dispensary for the property located at 3929 West War Memorial Drive, commonly known as the Willanole Shopping Center.
Mr. Manager?
Maybe if I could ask Director Doolin to come forward to just kind of summarize this item, along with Assistant Director Leah Allison. It will be Assistant Director Leah Allison will come forward.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Manager. So before you is a request to actually amend the special use that currently exists for the Willanole Shopping Center. The shopping center is, is encompassing the Sam's Club, the Coles Building, the, the other multi-tenant buildings, as well as the, the properties that sort of align the front of the shopping center, which includes this property as the formal, former Applebee's Restaurant, and the other properties that kind of align along Willanole's Road and War Memorial Drive. So a cannabis dispensary is a special use, and because this already has a special use for a shopping center, the request is to amend that special use to determine whether you want to allow the cannabis dispensary operation in that specific property, 3929, formerly Applebee's Restaurant that has been vacant for some time. Can I answer any questions about the proposal specifically?
Thank you, Assistant Director. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This site that's up before us today is in District Four, and so I have been involved since the genesis of this. I just want to ask a few clarifying questions, just to address some of the anxiety that is around this particular site, and then also just a conversation when it comes to recreational marijuana. When the state decided to legalize recreational marijuana several years ago, we know that there still is a stigma that is associated with it. And so I think it's important to address the objective, the objective reasoning, and maybe some of the angst, and then some of the subjective things, based off of your upbringing or belief or, you know, your values. You may not never get a, get on board with it, and that's fine. Everybody has their right to, to do so. Assistant Director Allison, can you talk a little bit about the process once a recreational marijuana site is highlighted? When they go to planning and zoning, can you talk a little bit about how do you vet that to ensure that that site is appropriate to move forward to the planning and zoning commission? And then also talk about how the planning and zoning commission vets that site?
Sure. So we have an application process that includes not only looking at the specific property, but also the shopping center as a whole, to make sure that the development standards are being met. And that can, it's, the physical characteristics of the site can include parking lot appropriately striped, handicap parking, landscaping, enclosure of the garbage dumpsters. So we look at the whole, and we inspect and make sure that if there's anything that has become deficient, we can address that through this review process. And so that is the report that we prepare as staff to the planning and zoning commission, and also utilizing the set standards that we review all special uses against, which are right through our, our, our code, that includes looking at public health, safety and welfare, appropriate ingress egress, traffic, any impact with that, specifically with this proposed new use. We also look at the neighborhood and make sure that there, again, isn't any negative impact with the proposed use, as we would with any special use. So that's the package of the preparation that we prepare to the planning and zoning commission. They utilize those same standards in making their determination, along with any public comment that comes at that special, at the planning and zoning commission meeting. And with that, then, we prepare the report to you for consideration.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I would like to give privilege of the floor to a few special guests, if that's okay, that, one, the owner of this potential site, Gregory Elliott, and then his legal representation, Andrew Scott and Dano Farrell, who is head of his security. If you all could come to the microphone, if that's okay?
Sure.
And the reason why I'm doing this is one, I want to demonstrate the due diligence that's been put into this particular site. I'm very sensitive to what constituents are bringing forth as concerns, and so I want to give these gentlemen the opportunity to address some of those. So, Mr. Elliott, if you could just introduce yourself as the owner, just, maybe just a little bit of background, and then from there, I'll ask some of the questions that constituents have brought forth for this particular site.
My name is Gregory Elliott. I'm the owner of World of Weed, we do business as Ivy Hall. I'm a social equity owner and born and raised in Chicago. And one of our primary goals when we come into a location is to be good stewards of the community. And we encourage our neighbors to reach out to us and let us know how we can contribute to making the community better.
Thank you, sir. A couple of the questions that, that came up was regarding security. How are we going to ensure that there's no loitering? Making sure that the young person that's at the Willanole's movie theater doesn't somehow get in the dispensary and get their hands illegally on, whether it's leaf or edibles or whatever? So, Mr. Farrell, if you could talk a little bit about the security measures that are in place to ensure that loitering isn't taking place, and that young people aren't illegally getting their hands on the products that'll be at the site?
Thank you. Just for a little background, I'm the owner of a company called Silverstar. We do security at over 100 different locations that are cannabis-related in three states, Illinois, Missouri and Michigan. We've been doing this since 2014, and we bring a tremendous amount of experience, knowledge and protocols to ensure that these facilities are safe. As Greg mentioned, the first thing we do is we go out to the community, and we want to be good stewards to the community. So we go and introduce ourselves to the businesses that surround it, so that if there are any problems, they can call us directly. We also work with the chief of police in Peoria, sit down and show them our security plan, and talk about ways we can work with them should they be needed. But the security starts with a very foundational security plan, and it's built on concentric circles of protection, where we will look at having the facility under cameras, so every inch of the interior of the facility will be under camera, except for the bathrooms. And the exterior will have cameras on it, including license plate readers and facial recognition, so that we can, if there's a crime that happens outside, we can see it and share that information with the police. We've solved many crimes outside of the cannabis community using those cameras. And the way a dispensary is set up is there's three different parts to a dispensary. There's the public access area, there's the limited access area, and there's a restricted access area. So the public access area is where anybody can come into, and it's usually just the vestibule, where there's a receptionist and someone there. And one of the things that you mentioned is, how do you know someone that's not 21 can get in? So what happens is when someone comes into a dispensary, they have to come to the reception desk, and they have to provide an ID. Most of the time, it's a driver's license. We accept passports, green cards, other ones that are regulated by the state that are given approval. And they're not just looked at by the person at the front desk. What happens is there's a scanner at the front desk, and every driver's license has a barcode on the back of it. What you do is you put it into the scanner, it goes to a database, and what it gives you back is the va- the driver's license is valid, and that person's over 21. And so when you're talking about the public access area, to get into the limited access area, which is where you call the point of sale, where you could purchase the product, there's an access control, meaning there's a door with a lock that has like a magnetic lock on it, where you have to hit a pad, put a code in, and let that person in. So the first step to not letting someone 21 in is verify them in the front. Once they're verified, then we let them through a door into the point of sale area. I should mention, there is no product in the point of sale area. So contrary to a liquor store or anywhere else, there is no product in the point of sale area. Usually met with someone who's a cannabis concierge, or what they call a bud tender, that will actually help you with your order and try to get you through as fast as they can or give you, answer any questions. But the second line of defense is when you go up to the counter and purchase product, you have to show your driver's license again. So there's a secondary authentication that that person is 21 before they will provide you any product in a sale. Behind the point of sale area is what we call the restricted access area. And what that means is no employee or any person can be behind that restricted access area that does not have an ID PFR badge, meaning you have to apply to the state, get a badge through a background check, a very formal screening process, and then you, if you're badged, you can be behind there. So that when a transaction happens, they will put into the system, and I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, but there's a seed to sale system in the state of Illinois, it's bile track. And what that means is anytime a plant's put in the ground, it's given an RFID tag, and that RFID tag follows, excuse me, it sells through the process when the plant's brought down, harvested, packaged, and brought to the dispensary. That's linked up, and once they, the, the person purchased the product, it is barcoded and is recorded in the seed to sale system, so it really deters any type of theft or diversion, because the product's being tracked from the place it started until it goes out the door. So once that transaction happens, and all it happens under camera, meaning there's usually one behind, one on top, maybe one on the side. What we want to do is record that transaction on multiple different levels. When the product comes out, someone looks at that product and says, hey, these are your gummies, or these are your eighth of flour that you're trying to get, and it's recorded on film, and they verify, is this what you ordered? Is this what you want? And then, one, it's completed, it's actually put in a Mylar bag. And so it's zipped up, and usually the receipt is stapled on it. And though there's a lot of questions about odor, so it's the, the packaging that it comes in from the cultivations is usually plastic, meaning there's no smell to it. And then it's put in another bag when you walk out the door, and each customer is told, you're not allowed to use this product until you go home. So you can't use it in your car on your way home, you can't use it out in front and loiter. And then when that happens, they staple the receipt to the bag, and the person's let out the building. One of the things that we're really big on as a security company is monitoring the cameras. If someone's in their car too long, all of our guards are trained to go out there, talk to them. Most of the time, it's an educational process where we're saying, hey, you're not allowed to be in your car, please move on and take your product home. And, you know, the, the whole system is built on making sure that people have safe access to camera, to cannabis, either coming in the facility or leaving the facility. And we will do perimeter sweeps, and we'll make sure that nobody loiters or, you know, stands in the community. And if we do have an incident where someone's using product in the parking lot, we will call the, the Peoria Police and let them handle it.
No, thank you for that, that detailed response. I think that addresses a lot of the anxiety that has been brought forth, particular for this site. The irony of this site is I used to work at this Applebee's for four and a half years in college. We sold a lot of two-for-twenty's and dollar margaritas, so I would have never thought good old Applebee's would be a potential dispensary, but life has a way of smiling. But you all have demonstrated that you've done a lot of research into this. Mr. Elliott, I know you own, you're involved in multiple ventures, and so I know that this is not your first rodeo. And so if this does pass tonight, I look forward to welcoming you all to the fourth district, and then also making sure that that dialogue is open with the neighborhoods that are around there. I do think this particular location is ideal, because you have to cross War Memorial to get to some of the neigh- the nearest neighborhoods of Crayton Woods and Lynn Hurst and Briardale. You've got to cross Willanole's to get to some of the neighborhoods behind Sam's Club. It's really isolated, and I'm excited for the transformation, because right now, the old Applebee's is, it's an eyesore right now. And so I'm excited for something to go in there. You all have a sound plan, and it's going to be a great tax generator for the city of Peoria. So without, without further ado, I would like to make a motion for approval. Thank you.
Sir, a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Additional discussion? Councilmember Graepp?
Yes, I brought up the idea of a moratorium on these. And I think we should take the temperature of the council on this. I indicated the last time we discussed this, that since this was a social equity one, I would be favorably predisposed toward it. But I think there are limits on what this community should have to absorb in terms of cannabis dispensaries. And I think as the years pass, we'll look back and wonder what we were thinking. So I will vote to approve this, only if part of it is to implement a moratorium after this one's approved for the entire city of Peoria. And I think, Councilor Allen, you are open to that, but we'll see. Thank you.
We do have a policy session- We do have a policy session on cannabis industry scheduled for October 11. So, we have a motion, okay, we have another comment. Councilwoman Jensen.
I guess I have a question with regards to Councilman Grab's comment. Are you, is it an open-ended moratorium or until we have a policy discussion and decide whether or not we're going to set limits?
I mean, if you want to have that discussion, we can, but I'm already signaling to you that I think, here we go again now. We're using a tool, we're going to make a value judgment. Does this help disadvantaged people? Well, maybe, since this is a social equity one, you could say that. But if we continue to have these in this community, will that be helpful? You see, there's a lot of devil going into detail. So, Mayor, I respect your thoughts that we should have a policy discussion before we try to force this issue right now.
So, and that's not part of the motion? You know, that's his sentiment?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
No, I was getting some clarity.
Oh.
So, since that is off the table now, I digress. Thank you.
Okay. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with Tounay, Seer, and Jackson.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash three-three-three is a communication from the city manager, an assistant city manager, to approve the Peoria Civic Center budget and annual report. And on your desk, there is a presentation.
So, I'm going to ask Councilmember Ruckregel to first make some comments and then turn it to the city manager, who's probably going to turn it to Mr. Edgar.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of thoughts is, you know, I think that all of us are going to wonder in years from now how we came to sort of identify our lives over this decade. And it's going to be pre-COVID, COVID, and post-COVID. And that goes matter if we're talking about family life, work, life around this horseshoe, or operating any of the businesses that sort of make this city the city. And I think tonight, what you're going to see is a presentation of, just like in all of those pieces, if it was our work, our life, working around here on the council, we know that when COVID came down and we had to stop everything, it was a lot harder to be able to get them started again. And there's a life to be able to get things started, and I think we're going to be talking about that tonight as well. But something that's probably not mentioned enough in this presentation is I'd like to make sure that we recognize the great work of the authority members that throughout this process are there day in, day out. They're great, they're active, they are extremely involved in the operation of the Peoria Civic Center, the committee members that helped there, and of course, the staff. And, you know, the Civic Center really is a host for our entertainment, for people who come into the city. It's never lost on me that while some cities hide their civic centers away, they're separate from city government, that people who come to our civic center to be able to enjoy some time there, if they're there for a conference, they get to see that it wraps itself around City Hall. And I think that's intentional because I think we're putting an iconic piece of business, an iconic piece of livability, right here next to City Hall. And Mr. Edgar tonight is going to be talking about a lot of the things that have led us to this point and kind of what next year looks like as well. But I want to go back to just reminding the council that the Civic Center has several purposes. It has a responsibility of operating fiscally. It has a livability for our city, for the residents, and also to bring people in. It's an economic driver. It pays taxes, but it also brings to our area around it economic impact as well. And so, the Civic Center is critical to our overall operations as a city. It affects our budgets, but it also really is the host to many people where we get to say welcome to Peoria. So, with that, look forward to the presentation. I've gotten some sneak peeks you and I have talked about. And I think tonight's presentation really comes from a conversation that you had is, you know, how about we hear as that transition is being made? And I appreciate your asking for that, and so I would turn it over to the city manager and Mr. Edgar.
Manager?
Thank you. Yes, we do have with us Rick Edgar from the Civic Center, who's going to walk through a presentation for us and talk a little bit about the budget for next year as well. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Edgar.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's, I know it's been a long night, so I will be judicious in my language as much as possible, but we have a lot of important things to talk about. As you may know, this is our 40th year of existence that we're celebrating. When we went into '22, coming out of COVID, we had some substantial challenges that we knew were in front of us. The biggest one was COVID mitigation. Most of the tours that were going out wanted us to have masks, mandates in place on a top of what was already being done by the state government. The challenge that we had was about half of our audience didn't think we were doing enough. The other half of our audience thought we were doing too much. So, it impacted those first six months we were open. We reopened our doors on July 24th last fiscal year. Those first six months, we saw about a 15% to 25% drag on most of our shows until, once the mandates were lifted, things started getting back to normal. But to give you an idea, that went through the entire Bradley basketball season where mask mandate was in place, at least in some degree. Because of some of the things related with COVID, one thing that we were surprised on, we had a lot of confirmed shows that canceled. You can look at the number there, there was 24 convention center events that were canceled or postponed. We had nine that were at a reduced levels. To give you an example, our farm show usually takes up our entire convention space. This year, it took about 40%. One of the challenges they had were getting vendors. It was because they couldn't even staff their own businesses, much less going to a regional vendor to sell your wares. And cars, they didn't have new cars to sell. Arena events and theater events, and to give you an idea, when we say canceled, some of them were brutal for us. Our Willie Nelson date had sold out on the on-sale, was sold out for three or four months, and then they decided they didn't want to play theaters and the date got pulled. So, we actually, not only did we lose the date, lost that revenue, but we already spent all the advertising dollars. So, it was more painful than just having shows not happen. The other thing is in the hospitality industry, I think everyone can agree, staffing was a significant challenge. We were no different, but we did some things kind of cleverly to address that, and we're going to get to that. So, how did it turn out? All these things working against us, we were the number 91 arena in the United States and number 64 in theater. Even with all these challenges, our folks started coming out and we had events. The theater one we were really happy about, there's only, we were number three in Illinois. Only the Rosemont and the Chicago Theater in Chicago had more guests come to their events. Here's a little bit of an array of some of the things we did. We really found this year that family shows, for the first time, had made a dent in our ratings. People were coming out. Actually, the family shows were improved by the mask mandate. Strangely enough, folks felt more safe, they brought their kids out. Comedy and rock were really big for us. But even though we were coming out of COVID and did not have our first arena event outside of tenants until January, Reba McEntire was our highest grossing all-time country show. Gabriel Iglesias broke the comedy record. Blippi in our family show, it broke the family record in our theater. And Hot Wheel Monster Trucks, and we're going to talk a little bit about that one later, also set the all-time monster truck record for our venue. So, these are our top 10 shows. I like to give a little history. I like to say our current management team, my senior directors and a lot of our key contributors, everything that you see in bold has happened during our watch. Six of the top 10 arena shows of all time, including Reba McEntire, number three. In the theater, we actually do a little better. Seven of the top 10 shows of all time have happened with this management team. For those that are new on the council, I arrived in June of 18. These are all shows that had happened after that. One thing that I'm really proud of, and I do want to point out one show, was Judas Priest. Judas Priest is traditionally an arena act. We felt that it worked better here in a theater, and that was one where our instincts were right. They actually were in town for four days checking, and they kicked off their tour. And it went up to number three. It was a fantastic show for us, it was profitable for the promoter, us, as well as the artist. So, we look at the overall outcomes. We made budget coming out of '22 where things were just crazy. You may not believe this, but that's four-for-four for budget. Even in our COVID year, we were so far ahead of what our budgetary expectations were. Six and a half months in, we were able to mitigate expenses and make the budget that was originally put in front of us by the end of the COVID year. We're increasing revenues per event, so we pulled out one in particular, arena concerts. We are now, the fiscal year 19 was the best year we had ever had, record year. We're actually making more per show now. We're getting smarter about our business, and we're also learning how to make those shows more profitable for the venue. And when you look back over at the previous management from '12 to '18, we're now making 293% more for every single event we do that's an arena concert. Again, these are the things that fund our venue. We're also looking for new stuff. You know, we can't do 50 concerts a year. We have to diversify our product. So, this year, we looked out and we found this new monster truck show that Mattel was getting behind. We also brought the Ultimate Demolition Derby, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later, too. One other one that was really cool is Quad Comic-Con. My kids love comic books, they love to do all that kind of stuff. We debuted it right as we were coming out of COVID. We got a decent attendance, but we actually more than doubled the attendance this year, and we're now talking, expanding it, not just from a Saturday, but for a full weekend. And what we're finding out is we might have this cool little regional event. We're now getting people coming for several hours to come because they get to see 80 to 110 vendors all in one spot. Staff retention, so we talked about how hard it was to get people coming out. We got really clever, and one of the things we did is we knew that we needed to find a way to keep staff. We identified 16 full-time employees when we were coming out of COVID. And what we did is we made sure they felt they were part of the team. We did some things to make them feel like they belonged and listen to their voice. While most folks are having staffs reductions and losing folks, one year later, 16 of those employees, they're all still with us because they're part of what our vision is. For part-time staff, one of our challenges was they didn't feel like they were getting paid enough incremental work. So, what we did is we actually made them a pool of employees where now that we've gone cashless, the fans get the opportunity to leave a tip or gratuity or a thank you. But whether you're the fry cook, whether you're at the front, whether you're pouring beer, you're in a pool. So, what happened is everybody was elevated up. You know, we have a 90% retention rate in our concession staff. When everybody else is losing staff hand over fist, we kept 90% of our concession workers. The other one that we really do is we treat this money like it's our own. We're being smart with it, we're trying to make sure it lasts. Our HRA distribution, not to go down a long path, but previously, if a group came in and asked for money, it was like, well, it sounds like a good idea, they could promise you anything, and we were good. We stopped listening to promises and we started looking for results. So, if you come to us and say you're going to book 1,000 rooms, and we have a formula that I'm happy to share with anyone on this council, where we go, this is what your hotel room rates are, we're estimating what you will spend on food, here is the tax revenue generated by you coming to our community. We use that as a basis for incentive dollars. And what we've done is now we get a three-to-one ratio direct for our venue. So, if you give me a dollar of tax money, we're going to turn it into three and bring the event here. The indirect event is between $6 and $12 per guest. So, we're really getting a 10-to-one ratio, and in this current economy, anybody getting 10-to-1 should be happy. So, let's look at specific events and what they mean for us. So, I'm going to look at the arena here, and just kind of to go overview, we broke it out between our two tenant events, our entertainment shows. Those are things like Hot Wheels, WWE, and then the concerts kind of speak for themselves. What we really want to point out is 24% of our events are concerts and entertainment, the U.S. Day, but they generate 71% of the revenue. That's why we're focused on these type of events because they fund not only the arena, but also a lot of the convention center events, which are not created to create money. They're created to generate money for other people other than the venue. In the theater, you'll see that performances take a good bit of the event days. Just so you know, part of those performances are like the symphony orchestra, which are not revenue generators, but they're community events, as well as we have several dance troupes there. We saw that that performance line usually generates a little more revenue. But one of the challenges out of COVID is our audience that's a little bit older, who typically supports our Broadway series, they were a little more hesitant this year. So, going into '22, we noticed that there was a drop-off, again, in that 15%, 20% rage. I will say, we're happy to announce our Broadway series subscribers are up 33% going into this upcoming season. And in the convention center, you can see there's a lot of different things that make up what we do. One area that kind of stood out to us, which may not stand out to you, is sporting. What we found out is we became a really good hotbed for cheerleading events. So, the sporting line is usually well below 10%. We've now grown that. And the one that has been the biggest challenge for us is the consumer shows because, again, as we had talked about, the vendors aren't coming. And when the vendors can't come, then you have fewer products to sell, you have fewer products to sell, it's less attractive to the audience. We're working on getting those events back, but we're probably still about two years away for them returning to normal. We also took a little time to fix the building. For some that may not be aware, we were awarded a DCEO grant in early 2020 for $25 million. I will say, as of today, we still have not seen a dollar of it. We have filled out the applications, but it's a long process. Four of the major projects that we worked on is our cooling towers. Today, you're cooling air in here, by the way, we send that to you. For those that don't know, it comes from the arena, and it comes from the venue, actually cools this building. We are looking to have that project completed by summer of '23. Unfortunately, you're going to see a trend. These numbers were budgeted based on 2019 when we did our study. We were $800,000 over budget because the cost of goods, the cost of employment has all raised our prices for these capital projects. Parking lot resurfacing, we have a new parking system and the parking lot. The resurfacing was actually completed today at 4:00 PM, and the new parking lot system will be operational beginning October 1st. Like several things, we're going cashless in our parking, so that will be in place. And then we're going to have better services. It also allows us to do dynamic parking. So, one of those things that we'll hear is, yes, we will raise parking rates for our prime events because there's a brand. The other thing that we will now have the ability to do is for those convention center events where somebody's coming to a comic book show where the ticket price is $5, well, we know they don't want to pay $10 to park. If we keep a stagnant parking, we'll be able to do hourly rates, or we could also offer buyouts for some of the groups to say, hey, we want to buy out the parking lot today when you don't have multiple events. We just have to be very careful because if we offer a buyout for a smaller event and then we book a major concert, it will be a revenue drain on us because we have to facilitate so many things with the three different entities in our venue. The roof replacement, major issue. The original budget was $8 million. We'll say, or, excuse me, the original budget was $8 million, and it says we're under budget. That sounds great. We're only doing 70% to 75% of the original project. We could not afford to do the full thing. There is some areas of our roof that still have some lifetime on it, and it was decided at our committee level that we probably don't want to replace every roof every 25 years at the same time. So, we're going to have about a three-to-five-year lag on the rest of the property. A really good one for us is the distributed antenna system. For those, it's called a DAS. We partnered with AT&amp;T. No taxpayer dollars went into this project. I just want to repeat that, not a single dime of taxpayer dollars went into this project. It's an over a million-dollar project. The other thing is, is now if you go into our venue, you're going to get five bars on your cell phone if you're with AT&amp;T. We expect other carriers to sign up upon completion. We're about a week to 10 days out for this project being complete. The other thing about this that is really awesome, AT&amp;T put in a first responder dedicated line. So, if there were ever to be a major event downtown, the first responders would have a dedicated line and would have perfect ability to communicate with each other. Again, this was done at no cost to the taxpayers. So, not only does the building benefit, we also have, the fans are going to benefit, but the first responders and public safety benefits is a fantastic project. It would be remiss if I didn't point out something. When we started this project, it was $47 million at the beginning of 2020. Costs and goods have gone up, and even though we've got $25 million, once we go through that, we still have $35 million in unfunded needs projects. These are not want projects, these are needs projects that we are not going to be able to do. We had listed 20 items that we had identified as needs. With the money that we have, we're probably going to be stopped at number six. So, we still have 14 projects that are unfunded. We pay taxes. I think Councilman Ruckregel pointed that out. Even in this year, we got the taxes up. The little bit of disparity, if you'll notice, we actually beat our 2020 year where things were a little bit similar, but 2019, we're down. And the question, Mayor Ali asked, why are we so far down in this year if we were doing all these great things? All those canceled events were tax generators that we lost. It was the volume of events is where we're having the discrepancy in the city because the city gets money from food and beverage and from ticket event sales. Those lost events and that lost food and beverage primarily- Those lost events and that lost food and beverage primarily is why we're down this year. We think that number should come back up next year because the calendar is filling in nicely. But the state of Illinois, we're right there. Our best year we ever had, we were right in competition. A big driver of this is merchandise sales. So those shows that we had that were generating more money, they were selling a lot more T-shirts. They were selling those things to the fans because of the higher quality of show. And so we were able to get that tax revenue up for the state. So between the two, again, we're about three quarters of a million dollars in tax generation. So we're going to talk, so that's twenty-two. So twenty-two, we kind of came out okay and then lo and behold, here comes twenty-three and we got a whole list of surprises and challenges ahead of us. Utilities, I think that, I don't have to tell anyone in this room, but utility costs are going up. We had done previously a really smart thing. We had locked our utility rates in for three years at a very low price. That price ends now. We have been working closely with our partners, but it's looking like two and a half to three times what we were paying just a month ago is going to be our new utility rate. So that's a massive challenge in a building of our size. That is a million dollar problem. Insurance, because of the deferred maintenance on the building and the quality of the roof isn't currently, we have now for the second year in a row bid this project out to get better insurance rates. We have sent it out to no fewer than sixteen carriers, two years in a row. Two years in a row, only one carrier will even touch our building and that's because they've been a long-term, our long-term insurance. Our rates went up by more than a hundred thousand dollars this year. And it's going to keep going up and it's about two hundred thousand up where it was two years ago. Once we get the roof project done, that should help with the insurance, but that's a problem that we can't solve right away. Employee salaries, to keep those good employees, we had to make market adjustments. Again, we kept our employees, we've made market adjustments, but there are some raising rates there to keep the good staff that we have in place. Because we have to be competitive with everyone else, we can't just be going off our budget. We have to compete with others for our staff. Subsidy reduction, in working with the city finance, they've told us that they expect the HRA taxes to be down and to expect about sixty percent of what we traditionally get in subsidy to support the venue. Commodity price index, these are your table, talk items with your family, I think everyone knows gas is up from where it was, eggs, butter, we do a lot of, you know, food. So every, everything we have has gone up, chicken fingers across the board. The only thing that stayed relatively flat was beer, so that's good for us. But beer went up only about one percent this year. And then consumer shows, I want to make sure everyone understands, this is the one item that traditionally makes money in the convention center and we know that those shows are not coming back at the levels that they were. They're trying to come back, we have great partners, they want to do these events, but we know that we're probably looking at fifty to sixty percent of what the vendor participation was going to be, which that directly impacts our bottom line. So I've given you the bad news, so what's going right? I think keeping that leadership in place, keeping that knowledge base from our staff was critically important for us to get through COVID and this is the same team that's going to get us through this. I cannot commend the staff enough coming out of COVID with all the uncertainties to ramp up for all the activity we had in the arena and making it work. HRA dollars, we don't get much, but the dollars we get, we maximize. And I think we've shown that through our numbers and we're going to continue to follow their strategies to make every dollar count. Revenue projections, our biggest challenge for this budget is expenses that we can't control, utilities, reduction of subsidy, insurance. We actually are putting forth our most aggressive revenue generation year that we've ever put on a budget in the last five years. Parking, with the new parking lot, we're now going to shift from having staff out there to collect because we felt that it would be better to promote safety. Lights are going to be up, we're going to have roving up parking attendants throughout the events. When people come to our events, they feel safe. That safety has a value and so we're shifting to that model coming up this year. We're looking for new stuff because we are not going to sit on our laurels and just keep doing the same things because that's not a way to keep people excited. This upcoming weekend, I don't know if you know this, we have a Pokemon Regional Championship. There's only eight in the United States. It's free for you to attend, they pay to compete for the world championship in Japan. This was a big deal, this was a Chicago event that we had some relationships, they contacted us and found out that they really liked what we had to offer and they chose Peoria. If you look at their website, it's cities like Baltimore, L.A., New York and Peoria. You know, so we got into that list with some heavy hitters because of our reputation. Synchronized skating, typically this is an event that we would never touch because it's in the middle of our prime season last week of January. But when we spoke to them, this is an event that's trying to get to an Olympic level. And they did not ask us for a single incentive dollar. They wanted our venue because of what we had to offer. And when we met with them, it became apparent that we were the right match. They're going to pay our full rates, they actually contributed money towards the ice plant because we've had challenges with our ice plant, they put money into their bid to cover their costs for the five days that they're here. And everyone is from somewhere else. So all of their competitors are coming into town, staying at our hotels, eating at our restaurants and staying in our venue. This is a week long that they're here for the three days of competition, their whole week. So with all of those factors in place, we took the deal. It's going to be very profitable for the venue, but it's also going to be more impactful for the community. We're also trying to learn and watch what other folks are doing. So one of the things that we figured out that would might surprise you is we're going to follow box office trends that are going nationally. And one of the things that really shocked us when we actually ran the numbers, and this is two years in a row, by the way, ticket sales by location. We pulled out Tazewell in Peoria County, it's over, I think it's sixty-seven, I can't see it from here, but it's like almost sixty-eight percent of our tickets are bought outside of the two counties that are connected to the building. Sixty-eight percent. We then said, well, that makes sense, so they're buying online, so it must be you're out of town, you're buying online. But look at our local purchases, only fifteen percent of the people come to the box office. They're buying online. So during COVID, we've paid attention to the trends, folks got used to buying from Amazon, Target, have it shipped to your house with tickets. Mobile ticketing is over half of the purchase. Somebody looks at their phone, buys a ticket, they're going to come see the show. And now that we're going to more and more touchless, your ticket's right there. You don't get a printed ticket, you walk in with your cell phone and that's how you pay for your tickets. So when we saw this, we adjusted our box office hours because we had to be more respectful of what the market was telling us, but also it allowed us to control some costs with staffing. And this is the fun part, this is when we get to tell you about our friends that bring us shows. Premier Productions is the preeminent Christian contemporary promoter. But they've brought, they've broadened their outreach in the last couple of years to family shows and now they're into country music. Those are just a few of the shows and what Jonathan and their team had said, they went, when I moved here, Premier was doing a show every two or three years, but our team built a relationship. He now calls me and says, hey, we're looking at buying this, what do you think? And we get the first phone call and guess what? We get on the tour. So this is a fantastic relationship with a fantastic team and we're now probably at about a half dozen shows a year with them. That's my friend Paul Maloche with Gabriel Iglesias when they were here with Icon. Paul's company does a lot of comedians and what he would tell me is, I'm the P.T. Barnum, he goes, you're always in a good mood when it's show day, the staff's so happy to see us. But I think what comes through, and this is something that I've heard more and more and I want to share with the folks here, when they come to Peoria, they say when we're in a major market, they expect to be entertained. The crowd, it's just another show. We come to Peoria, it's a big deal. Mr. Iglesias was fantastic, we actually took him out to dinner to a local restaurant. He was great, fans were interacting with him and he broke our venue record, but it was that relationship. This year, Joe Coy is on an arena tour, except for one day. In Peoria, he's playing our theater. And it's not because we were selling tons of tickets to Joe Coy, he has that much fun coming to Peoria that he put us on his tour. Those are the kind of relationships we've been building over these last four years. Sam Williams, the Ultimate Derby, I kind of alluded to this earlier in the presentation. This is a very unique event. It is a high-speed demolition derby indoors and they need special dirt and there's all kinds of cool stuff. If you want me, I can bore you with all the details, but here was it, they needed a convention center. Because that is where their pits are, because they're in February and half of the experience is watching them beat up on these cars. Because these are not pretty cars, but they're very effective and very expensive. And when he called us, it sounded nutty. He flew into town, we met with him in twenty nineteen and over the time, we built this relationship. Well, he came here this year and guess what? This is another event, all of the drivers are from all over the Midwest. They come into town for three, four days to participate, stay in our hotels, eat at our restaurants. We've never sold so much pushlight at an event since I've been here. And it was a fantastic event, but what Sam would tell me and he kind of said, he mentions in this quote that he said, we're his large signature event. What he was really saying and what he's told me personally is, you're our Super Bowl. You were the first ones to take a shot on us. This is a great event, we're going to build it and you're going to be our Super Bowl. So we have those six to eight other cities, it's always going to end with the best of the best in Peoria. What a great place to be for us coming out of COVID to build that relationship that was fresh and new. And I want to point out, this came from my company. Some folks asked, what is ASM Global? It was two GMs at ASM Global who said, you need to talk to that guy in Peoria. And Sam flew out here and we met and we've now become, I would think, maybe even business friends, always done one, we're like best buddies, but we've done this really cool event and he's going to be back this year smashing cars and I hope you can check it out. Talking about smashing cars, monster trucks, Nick Shane. So these guys originally started the monster trucks that you see with the other guys, had a five-year non-complete and came back. They cut a deal with Mattel to bring out Hot Wheels so the kids start recognizing the cars because you can buy them on the shelves at your Target and your Walmarts. And we jumped in on this thing and he kept, he called me and all of a sudden, on day two, and I think some of the folks in this room were there, all of a sudden, the guys who owned the product came in. Like, why are these guys coming to Peoria? And they go, you guys are a primary market, you guys have slayed it. We've got great treatment, you are a prime market, your ticket sales are phenomenal, we're going to come back for years to come. So Nick and the group there are coming back. This year it's going to be a glow party, so there's going to be trucks with laser beams. I mean, who doesn't love trucks with laser beams in the dark? So great kid event, fantastic, wonderful partners and these are the type of groups that we want to do business with moving forward. And lastly and most importantly, of all the slides and everything I've shown you, I want you, if there's one thing I want you to know, for those who don't know, Tim Comfort and the Comfort family have owned Jim's Steakhouse for years. We met for the first time July twenty-four of twenty twenty-one. We'd been in town and he told me what you do for my business, when you guys went away, we were afraid we were going to lose our business, but you've brought us back. He has gone out of his way to show what a true ambassador of Peoria is. And what he did, and I can now say this because Greta Van Fleet was the hottest rock band going out on tour this summer, the opening for the Rolling Stones, opening for Metallica, their headline tour sold out in fifteen minutes. We had a date. They come into town a day early, I called Mr. Comfort and I said, look, these guys haven't had a decent meal and they can't go out because they have fans in every one of their lobbies, they can't even leave. We snuck them out through the kitchen, out the back door of the hotel they were. He opened his restaurant on a Sunday night when they were closed. Not only did he open it, he went all in, he brought the piano bar, he brought the staff in, they greeted him, the band stayed for four hours. We thought it was going to be a really uncomfortable dinner and it was fantastic. It was one of those experiences, it's a life experience. Those guys remember Peoria and when they have that experience, they talk to other bands and go, you know what, those guys in Peoria, they're nuts, man, it's a great time, go. We hooked them up and I just want to say, those are the type folks that are the champions of Peoria and they make my job infinitely easier. So if you see Mr. Comfort or Kristen or Nick or that family, please thank them on behalf of the city because they're phenomenal. So that is my presentation of twenty-two and the challenges we have for twenty-three.
It's great Peoria hospitality. Congratulations on the big post-COVID comeback, Mr. Edgar. Beautiful. Questions, starting with Mr. Councilman Ruckregal.
Thank you. And one shout out, I think both our Chair of the Peoria Civic Center Authority and Mr. Edgar are going to be talking each individually at a national conference, so they're both going to be putting some highlights. And Yvonne Greer is doing fantastic and I think it's going to be a national spotlight to have both of them being able to speak at this conference. But a couple of questions and thank you for the presentation. And I know our council members will wonder and so will our people who see our budget in front, so let's just kind of tackle the big piece right here. And I think we all understand that depreciation is a paper loss, it's not a real loss. And so if we go to the net income, last year, there was a net income of sixteen thousand dollars, so even with everything going on there, we were on, you were on the side of zero, that we like to see that positive side. But we're seeing a negative one point seven million dollar loss this year. And I know you talked about some of the things that are affecting that. You've got, you've got record sales coming in here. Can you talk about that number a little bit for our city council members and for our public?
Clarity, it's the International Entertainment Buyers Association in Nashville in a couple weeks. There's fifty panelists from all over the United States speaking at this and two of them are from Peoria. We're listed in the hometown heroes, we're the representatives of how secondary markets are doing things right and we're there to speak to others, to give them advice on how they can help their markets. So just for clarity on that. On the budget itself, on the list of challenges we had, we can overcome a lot. The two most challenging things that we have no control over, that we really don't feel at this time going into a potential recessionary economy, were I can't control utilities. I can't control utilities. The utility cost is going to go from about seven hundred and fifty a year to one point seven to two million dollars in one year. We can go into the details of why, but we have pretty heavy strains on the utilities. The other thing is, is next year the building's going to be used more. So while that's great, the utility costs are going to go up even more, we're going to use more kilowatt hours than we have in the past. The subsidy, it's nobody's fault, but if the HRA dollars are down, our typical subsidy's about one point six million, which helps us operate and that really supports the convention center side of the business. And if that number is going to go down to eight hundred to seven hundred to nine hundred in that range, that's something we can't control. This year, it was nine hundred, so just put, or I think it was seven hundred, excuse me, in this year's budget, but we also had a skeleton staff and fewer events. We have to be fully staffed to handle those events. Once we hit about October fifteenth, there's no open Saturdays. And we have multiple events and just to give you an idea of the strain on the building, the first weekend in November, we have a thousand-person banquet, Keith Urban, Bill Burr and four performances have come from away in a seventy-two hour period. So it's not like we're not working. Also on December third, I'd like to point out that we have a wonderful problem. We announced Terry Connick Jr. A few days later, we announced Pentatonix and the greatest compliment we got were complaints. How dare you have two great shows on the same night? By the way, both shows have sold over seventy percent in under ten days and are both trailing towards a sellout. What that says, we bring the right things to town, we get people from out of town to come in and spend their dollars and come to those shows.
So, so my second question then is on capital dollars and you touched on this a little bit. We, we know that we have been awarded a DCEO grant, that's twenty-five million, but because of timing, we had to go ahead and start several of those projects. One of those affected us right where we are, right here, because our heating and air is tied to the civic center. And I think we all went for a couple of days without some air conditioning on some hot days.
I may have gotten a phone call.
Yes, and, and we know how intricate that project is and that could not wait anymore. I think we were down to the very bare minimum. So my question on that is, and then the roofing has to happen at a certain time, capital dollars that we're waiting for, can you touch on the fact that you are expending them out before that? And, and I know the process in Springfield is working, I think you guys have gotten some questions and so that you needed to answer, you know, kind of as the process moves to the next step. So we know it's coming, but in the meantime, you've had to supply the cash to be able to keep those projects going, correct?
So because we came out of COVID so much stronger than expected, we had cash flow, we had plenty of money, but these projects could not wait and we do not know when the money's coming from DCEO. It's not a complaint, it's just a fact. So every time we think we're getting closer, we get another set of paperwork. It's just, it takes a while. So we've already expended well over seven figures to getting those projects moving forward. Now, once those dollars come in, we can repay ourselves for the grant, but we're now expending our cash that we had in reserve because we had beat budget by so much. So going into this next year, we hope some things trend differently, but we wanted to be honest with this committee and with the taxpayers that the utilities are absolutely this committee and with the taxpayers that the utilities are absolutely killing our budget next year. And other than turning off the lights or not doing events, there's really not much we can do about it.
Welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations on celebrating your 40th anniversary at the Civic Center. Now, do you have any tenants that's been with you that far or that long?
Symphony Orchestra, Bradley, and the hockey team.
Well, obviously, kind of a shameless plug on my part, with the Riverman being a tenant for 40 years at the Civic Center and winning four cups right here in Peoria, two IHL, which I was part of. Unfortunately, I am that old. One Cali Cup and one President's Cup. So just a shameless plug tonight, but I love my Riverman and also love the Civic Center. I mean, the Civic Center exists today and exists when I came to Peoria, and that's one of the main reasons I still live in Peoria. So I love my Civic Center. I think it's a great jewel for the city of Peoria. On a personal note, I spend a fair amount of time at the Civic Center. I don't like the cash. Did you see, ever see your policy change where we'll be accepting cash in a near future while I'm still alive?
I believe that is an industry that has been embraced by the majority of fans as well as staff. It also reduces our liabilities because with cash, there is problems. In the industry, it's referred to as slippage, and we have now reduced any of that to nil. And most folks are, have been transitioned during COVID to use credit cards, iPads, or, excuse me, iPay. We've really not had much of an issue, but if a fan comes to our events who is not, does not have a card, we actually have some for sale at our box office for them to be able to purchase. So we're not turning away business. It's just we're going to be doing this smarter. And also, the speed of service is increasing, and soon we'll be unveiling a DoorDash product in our venue where you can order from your seats to cut down on wait time in the concession stands.
I just got a couple harder questions, and maybe, I don't know if you're prepared to answer that. Maybe our city manager can help out on this. I just want to make sure we all understand, all my colleagues and especially people around Peoria, can you tell us about HRA tax, how it works? And I only see $900,000. Obviously, I know different, but can you explain to everybody who's listening about HRA tax, why it does exist, and where does the first 60% of really that money goes? And it's the difference between paying the debt and what we're giving them for operation?
So the, the HRA taxes are hotel, restaurant, and amusement taxes. The H in that is our hotel tax that we have that is, I think, currently at 8%. Then we have the restaurant tax, which is at 2%, and the amusement tax, which is at 2%. So that means that everyone citywide, if you're staying in a hotel anywhere in the city, you're paying that hotel tax. If you are going to an event at the Civic Center or some other activity in town, a movie theater, you will be paying the A tax, the amusement tax. If you are eating at a restaurant in town, you're paying the restaurant tax, and that's the largest of the three tax streams. The majority of that money goes to cover the cost of the debt service that was created when we expanded the Civic Center back in 2005, I think, right in that area there is when that was. So, so that debt will be rolling off the books. We've done some refinancing of that debt over the years, but that'll be rolling off the books in 2028. But that's where the, probably of the, of the $9 million roughly that we collect every year, that's where a good $7 million goes, is to pay that debt service first.
Great. Thank you. That's where I want to make sure people understood that the HRA tax revenue last year was $7 million that paid for the debt, not for the operation, but we also gave them $900,000 for the operation. Now,
Before we say gave us 900, I want to be really clear on that. It goes debt service, CVB, Arts Partners, there's some city expenses, and then what's left over comes to the Civic Center. So we're at the bottom of the list. So that's why when, if it's running shy of what it normally does, we're the ones that take the hit in our budget. The other ones are fully funded.
So the difficult question for me tonight is, last time you were here, Mr. Edgar, now we agreed to make a loan to the Civic Center, $4 million. Has this loan been repaid? And moving forward, and we see, like my colleague says here, depreciation is a paper loss, but we're looking at $6 million loss for this coming year, 2023. Will you anticipate needing any more money from the city?
So paying back the loan, to answer your question, that was part of the bond debt. So it got basically, just like if you refinanced your house, we got financed to the end. I want to make sure people that are listening to this, it wasn't a bailout. We didn't get $4 million and just walk away with it. We're paying it back through what we do. So that's the first thing. As far as needing money this year, we have fronted a little over a million. We would have to front about 2.5 million in the next 90 to 100 days, 120 days. If we do not get any DCO money, it would just be able to float us to pay for those. If we get the DCO money, we won't need any money this year.
Thank you very much for your time, and congratulations on celebrating the 40th anniversary.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we need a vote on the budget. Councilman Ruckregal?
I'll make, I will make a motion to approve 22-333.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any additional discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. There we go. Too fast. Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Edgar. Congratulations. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. 22-310 is a communication from the city manager and interim corporation counsel with request to approve the smart city brokerage agreement between the city of Peoria and Peoria Innovation Hub, doing business as Distillery Labs.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have the Distillery Labs agreement back with you with some changes and modifications to the agreement that we hope will meet council's satisfaction. With this, we took out the sentence under the purpose regarding the blanket permit. We have changed the word sponsor and are using the word user instead. And lastly, we added a paragraph 30, which is a non-exclusivity agreement that just clarifies that the city can pursue working with entrepreneurs directly instead of with, with Distillery Labs being the exclusive agent. So we just clarified all of that in the agreement. We hope that's to everyone's satisfaction. And answer any questions.
Okay. Councilmember Ruckregal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And city manager, thank you for making these changes. I think that we had a robust conversation at the last city council meeting, and I think it helped us really sort of understand what was in front of us, the fact that the city has definitely oversight in it. And what this does, this agreement, is allows our innovation teams, our companies are looking to be able to innovate here, a little bit more leniency with the knowledge of the city, working together with the city, to be able to do the things that can actually drive them forward. And in talking with several different companies that are involved in innovation, that might at some point down the line have a use for something similar to this, it was really important to understand that time was of the essence and the partnership, because when they do something, they want to be able to talk with the city back and forth and be able to work that out. I think we, we heard that through Public Works. And I think with the changes that you've made on vocabulary here, I think this makes this a lot more understandable, not only for the council and for the citizens, but I think for all of those that are going to be looking towards this, whether this is something they, they want to utilize or not. And by taking out the non-exclusivity, and I think being able to open that up, I think that kind of levels the playing field there, too. So I would appreciate, I appreciate your work on this. And with that, I would move to approve.
For a second, seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. More discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-293 is a communication from the city manager and interim corporation counsel with request to adopt an ordinance amending Article 19, Operation of a Cannabis Business of Chapter 18 of the Code of the City of Peoria, related to licenses and miscellaneous business regulations.
Okay. Which one of you is going to take this on? Counsel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since our last presentation, we have updated the council communication with some additional information for your review. We pointed out that in the Cannabis Tax and Regulation Act, it is specific as to exactly what the city's power and authority is on certain things. So we pointed out zoning and as well as all of the areas where zoning for a cannabis facility is permitted by right, as well as by a special use permit, as you certainly heard here tonight. We also pointed out that since we have had the special use process, the city council has actually approved four special use permits for cannabis facilities. Two of those are actively operating within the city. Two have never applied for an actual business license with the city. The other area that would be allowed under the act are time, place, and manner restrictions, and those are ones that you adopted as to restricting locations within sensitive areas. In our ordinance, we generally describe them as schools, but it can be described more broadly as areas where you would expect children to be. On-premise use can be allowed, or it can not be addressed. Our ordinance did not address the issue. There is a section in four of the ordinance, of the state statute, excuse me, that talks about the fact that a municipality, regardless of our home role status, cannot regulate activities described in 1 through 3, which is zoning, and time, place, and manner restrictions, and on-premise use, in a more restrictive manner than the state act. And then in section 5, it goes on to talk about the prohibition on location. And it says that regardless of a home role status, the city council has the authority to enact an ordinance to prohibit or significantly limit a cannabis business establishment's location. So in response to Councilwoman Jensen's question, even though the state act allows a social equity applicant to cite less than 1,500 feet from an existing cannabis business, the statute does give you authority to place some additional restrictions on that square footage or prohibit it altogether, for example. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions in regards to this particular ordinance.
And I would just urge the council to keep in mind that we're going to have a policy session on cannabis on October the 11th. I do want to kind of poll everyone to see if you want to start that meeting at 5:00 instead of 6:00. So we'll be reaching out to you to ask that question. It may jumpstart and give us a little bit more time that evening. But should we wait, defer this item until we have that policy discussion? It's, it's your call. Councilmember Jensen?
Yes. I think that's a good idea, to just move to defer this discussion and for our policy session on October 11th.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Seer, but I think we need a date, right, to, for four weeks, deferred for four weeks. You okay with that? Councilmember Seer? Okay. Defer for four weeks. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. So is there any other unfinished business? Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I, I had a conversation earlier this morning with Councilman Grab, in which I apologize to him that we didn't have the policy session on the agenda, or the, the presentation on the Safety Act on the agenda this evening. And I wanted to apologize to all of you as well for that, and, and to the listening audience, just to make it clear, we will come back on October 11th with a presentation on the Safety Act. We will have it be both from the police chief and from our legal counsel. We've also extended some invitations out for some subject matter experts to come in as well, to hopefully come and speak to the council. If they can't that night, maybe we can have them back at a future council meeting, but we want to continue to have that dialogue and to keep the public informed.
Okay, good. I think some things have happened in the meantime, like some trailer bills, and this is like evolving so fast. So it may be better that we waited in the first place. Counsel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since I sent an email to counsel yesterday, just within a few hours of that, there was actually a 72-page trailer bill that was filed. It's still so new, you can't find it on the Attorney General or on the Illinois General Assembly's website yet, but we were provided with a copy of it, and we anticipate additional trailer bills will follow suit in the next month.
Okay. Madam Clerk? We are at new business. Okay. I want to start with a new business item, then we've got a couple lights on. There's been a lot of discussion regarding immigrants, asylum seekers coming to Peoria, buses coming to Peoria. So I wanted to provide some, some clarifications around this issue, because it was probably 10 days, a couple weeks ago, that rumors started flying that buses of immigrants or asylum seekers may be coming to Peoria, to our city. And there's been no validity to that. I think that most of those rumors started because buses started showing up in Chicago. As of Friday, last Friday, there were 20 buses that arrived over a period of days at Union Station in Chicago. And that city has been forced to accommodate these individuals, many of which come off the bus dehydrated, malnutritioned, some have COVID and, and other ailments. And so they, they've been really strapped to try to accommodate. Because of that, the governor's office, IML officials have reached out to cities across Illinois to ask whether cities were willing to accept buses or accept immigrants or asylum seekers. Peoria did not respond to say, yes, we are inviting buses to Peoria. We have not responded in that manner. But we did agree that we should begin to put together some type of structure in the event that a bus does show up in Peoria. So a meeting was held with the county, with the continuum of care organization, those organizations that kind of provide shelter and support homeless populations. I was pleased that Councilwoman Regenbach joined that discussion of city staff, county staff, and really a lot of the same people who worked on the COVID structure, the command, it was like a command incident structure where you have a commanding officer. With COVID, it was Monica Hendrickson with the Health Department. But we are wanting to put together a structure in the event this does happen to Peoria, that we're not caught off guard, that we have something in place. And so there have been, there was a meeting with our police chief who wanted to reach out, offered to reach out to the Hispanic and Latinx community, because we know there's a lot of non-English speakers that are part of these individuals on these buses. You have to have culturally relevant responses. And so there was a meeting held, I think, last Thursday at the police station, Friday, last Friday, and about 50 individuals showed up, Spanish speakers that wanted to step up in the event this happens to Peoria, that, that they were willing to step up. And that's what we've really gotten, a lot of people that volunteered that said, in the event immigrants show up in Peoria, we're willing to assist in some ways. We've had businesses to step up with some accommodations. The Secretary of the Illinois Department of House of Human Services, IDHS, reached out through the governor's office to indicate that they have resources in the event that this would happen. But again, there may be some state-coordinated efforts to move people from Chicago to other cities. Some cities has volunteered. I've spoken to the mayor of Normal, Illinois. They're probably going to have a meeting this week or next and putting and putting together a structure in the event that they invite or that they experience new visitors coming to their city. So, I just wanted to put that out for the council as well as for the public. And that's really what I wanted to communicate. Councilmember Jensen, new business?
Yeah, my new business item, wondering, now that we haven't had, I think, push carts for the last two or three years, if we could maybe revisit the restrictions we put on food trucks as far as their location. I know we, I think, only permit them in two areas near downtown, because we wanted to protect the food carts and not take away from their business. I know a business owner who has a food truck in town, who used to have a restaurant downtown, is looking to use his food truck at some locations near downtown that might be prohibited. So, if we could get a report back and maybe get that on the agenda to consider loosening those restrictions in some manner, that would be good.
Yeah, the only locations that we currently allow food trucks are on half of the Courthouse Square block, along Hamilton and along Adams Street. And then there's a stretch of Jefferson Street here in front of the Civic Center, where we allow food carts. So, those are the only locations that we currently allow food carts to operate in downtown. Outside of downtown, they can operate in other locations. They can, on private property, food trucks can go anywhere in the city if they want to operate on that. Some have gone to RLI, for example. I think they have Food Truck Wednesdays at their corporate campus. But, you know, that's the situation that we have currently, the policy that council has, so.
So, I guess I would like to revisit that policy. I think, you know, if we have food trucks again, that might bring more people downtown, or those that are downtown might stay downtown to eat rather than go across the river or somewhere else. So, I think it's worth exploring and looking into, since the circumstances are different than they were when we adopted those limitations. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mrs. Kapuska, what is the legal definition of asylum?
Can't say that one was on the bar exam, so I'm not sure I know that one off the top of my head. But I suspect it's something along the lines of legal asylum, if that's what you're talking about, would be that a government or agency that would have jurisdiction would grant that person the authority to be present in a particular location without fear of retribution or consequence of any law. So, for example, when somebody comes to the country seeking, for example, political asylum, and we all sort of see these on crime shows on TV, right? If they're granted asylum, they're allowed to be there in the country, even if perhaps their method of entry into the country wasn't necessarily legal to start with.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure that, obviously, every time we do, we have discussions, there's always people that will be poor and cons, obviously. And I'm getting calls and texts, and people say, Dennis, you know, you're our councilman. Now, just make sure we don't have the room. We don't have the room for these people here. So, I just want to make sure there are people in Peoria that are not, you know, they're not all for accepting these people coming here to Peoria. So, as we have discussion, and you talked about "we," I don't know who the "we" is, but I just want to make sure that we all know there are some people. I just, they're just not sure what we're going to do to those people. And just, again, I don't want to be facetious, but just to come back to what my colleague, Mr. Grab, said earlier about the five acceptance, the five rules. Or, no, as we talk to our future decision, these five rules we're going to have. I mean, I'm not sure how taking these people in here helped really the minority or the, no, the poor or whatever, no, the people here in Peoria. So, just want to make sure it's out there, that somebody has to also make sure that we see both sides and we represent our community well. Chicago, how many buses you said they had, they receive in Chicago?
Over a thousand.
Over a thousand.
That was as of Friday. Today, I don't know the number, it could be much higher.
So, Chicago is the third-largest city in the United States. I mean, they should have, you know, what it takes to take care of those people. So, I'm not sure we do, but I'm glad that we're having those discussions. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, you know, from my understanding, there's a combination of immigrants who choose to leave their country, as well as asylum seekers who don't choose, but they're forced because of the nature of what's happening in their country. So, from what I understand, there's a combination of those types of individuals that are on the buses. And Chicago did not send an invitation to Texas or wherever the buses are coming. They were sent, you know, the buses were just sent to those places. So, they did not tell them to turn around, because these were people in need. Councilman Grab?
I think Chicago is a sanctuary city.
I don't know.
Peoria is not a sanctuary city. And a parallel that I can certainly see would go back to Hurricane Katrina, but it doesn't really even correlate, Councilman Seer. It's when we had that horrible hurricane, Katrina, that affected an American city and displaced all these thousands upon thousands of people through no fault of their own. We were asked then, we had Manager McKnight, Jim Artis was on the council at that time, John Morris was, and I, we met with stakeholders on a weekend that might help to facilitate if FEMA were to direct some of these children dispossessed by this horrible storm that basically wiped out much of a major American city. That's kind of different than what we're talking about here. But we were prepared to do what we could to help those people when we had a domestic situation. But this is a little bit different, and yes, it's somewhat interesting to hear about it, you know, on the news, and then to be asked by our constituents about it. And people have strong feelings on both sides of this issue. But that's the parallel that I would throw out there, but it's really not quite correct to correlate the two, because one was a natural disaster. Now, we're all watching what's going to happen, I believe, in Tampa. That could be horrific, what they're talking about. I think we might be called upon again through FEMA to help relocate people depending upon the magnitude of that storm. But in any case, those are some of my thoughts, and I appreciate the clarity or lack of clarity that's been placed on this issue. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other new business? Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the City Council.
Okay, I only see one card, and it is Ms. Yolanda Wallace.
It's interesting for me to be here years later. Actually, it's sixteen years ago, my very first time being at the City Council. And at that time, Mayor Artis was the mayor, and I was standing before City Council at the same bench, bleeding out tears, because my son, John Buckley, had been killed. That was September twentieth, two thousand and six. And he was a boy who was supposed to be going to the Navy. He was killed because he was talking to the police. They got rid of snitches. And so, at the time, there's Councilman Sears. I think there's only one or two of you who were here at that time. But Councilman Sears had, was about to get reelected, and he wanted to bring a program here called Ceasefire. Every time Ceasefire comes up, the name of it, it rings a bell in my ear and my heart that I can't sleep. I've been hearing it a lot lately. It's called, well, the first time I heard it, Mayor Artis, he tried to give a CBG grant, a look-alike of it, and he gave it to Carver Center and the Community Action Agency, and it was called Cherrywonga. Then later on down the line, they end up having another program in a look-alike program of the Ceasefire, but they turned it down. The closest we got to it at that middle point was Don't Shoot. I was the very first mother in the column of the Don't Shoot program. I have committed myself to working relentlessly with, I don't know, now you've got three or four different police chiefs. And now I'm working with Chief Eric there. And, but, and I must say, it has been a journey for me, and I have taken on this mission because it was a way for me to put my life back together again. This was the, I pulled it out, because I'm hearing Ceasefire again. So, if you say SNET, or if you say safety, those are trigger words for me. So, September twentieth, he got killed. Before October, I was fighting for Ceasefire, according to the Journal Star Archives. So, I've been doing this kind of thing for a long time, started a memorial garden called the John Buckley Memorial Garden that's held behind the Peoria Riverplex. And also, the Who Killed Me poster campaign, which is something that I've started in our community. Right now, we have a billboard up, and I'm sure most people don't know about it, because most of my efforts are volunteered. And so, when I get mothers who come and they ask me, how did you win your case? My case has been solved. Yeah, it was solved in two thousand and seven, was when we first went to court. However, anyway, the thing about it is that I want to know, how can I be a part of what the city is doing? Currently, I work in home care, and I have been still relentlessly, after work, extending myself to help mothers, to help families in our community. And I just want to know, so, in the time that John Buckley got killed, my son, and I've got two other kids, and just the whole ordeal of putting the family together again, which is still not together. So, this thing takes a long time, and now we're having more murders in the city. This was a picture that was put together by one of his classmates from Peoria High School. He graduated from the Business Academy. And he was my middle child, and I had a boy and a girl, and they still are living presently, but our family has never been repaired. So, that now that there are a lot of, and we went like two weeks for having the unsolved murder, and I went around putting up posters all over the city. That's when the Who Killed Me poster campaign was developed. I noticed in a lot of programs that they have, and they're great programs they seem to have, but there's not very many things for survivors like me to do. So, I volunteer over and over and over again. And I don't think I can stop, because I think it makes me feel like I'm doing something to help our community. But I've met with Chief Eric, and I've met with the other chiefs before him. I started off with Chief Settingsguard, and I've been going on and on and on, till now it's a legacy. Now, it's been ten years that the John Buckley Memorial Garden has been in existence behind the Riverplex. Without any support from my city, without any support from the Park District other than our partnership, I have raised every dime, every cent with all the families that we've helped throughout the years. Before the John Buckley Memorial Garden, I'm also the founder of the Community Day of Remembrance. That National Day of Remembrance was just September the twenty-fourth. It is a nationally recognized day in Washington, DC, and I brought it to Peoria. For four years, I did that, for my community, for our community, because I want so much to be a part of it. But during the midst of the time that my son was killed, I was going to school. I'm actually, I'm from the Champaign-Urbana area, and came here into Peoria and foster care system.
Ms. Wallace, wrap up about thirty seconds, okay?
Okay, that's fine. All right, and so, I just want to come and find out, what other way can I really do? What can I do to be a part of, what am I not doing right to be a part of the team? Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we are at adjournment.
I get a motion to adjourn, moved by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Thank you for your service.